I'll share down to announcements. Mr. Tahi, do you have any announcements for us?
The chair members of the Resource and Development Committee tomorrow, RDC has a leadership meeting out at Teesness Bus Chapter. It will start at nine o'clock in the morning. The following week, RDC and BNF Committee will have a joint leadership meeting out at Wolf Springs Ranch. The meetings will be held on Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday. Travel dates to and from will be on Monday and Friday. Chair members of RDC, that is my announcement. Back to you, chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Tahi. Honorable members of RDC, do you have any announcements?
Mr. Chair, this is Council Delegate Herman Daniels.
Honorable Daniels, you have the floor.
Yes, um, just one announcement, Mr. Chair. Today, the RDC, we have, um, uh, several legislations that that was needs to be act on by by RDC. Mr. Chair, thank you.
Thank you, Honorable Daniels. We certainly appreciate your service, the work that you do for the Navajo people throughout the Navajo Nation. So, thank you very much. Honorable Daniels, much success to you as well. Honorable members of RDC, any other announcements? I hear none. We'll go down to recognizing guests and visiting officials. We'll start with RDC. Honorable Vice Chair Walker, let's have introductions.
Yes, uh, Mr. Chairman, thank you. Hello, uh, committee members. And our, uh, legislative staff, office speaker, office legislative council, OPVP, uh, the DOJ, the then the divisions programs, departments that are with us this morning for our meeting. Although the, um, meeting, uh, participants and attendees, uh, audience, we have the Navajo people, our relatives, our citizens. Thomas Walker. Uh, the Western Agency. There, uh, there's not the.
I share, Honorable Vice Chair Walker. Chairman, Honorable Daniels.
Mr. Chair, uh, thank you very much. Um, Herman Daniels Jr. Chair, thank you.
Thank you, Honorable Daniels. Honorable Freeland.
Herman, uh, good morning, colleagues, Resource Development Committee members. Uh, um, staff and everyone on this call, um, good morning. From Eastern Agency. Representing chapters out here. Crown point. The city, White Rock, Lake Valley. Uh, um, for the prayer. Uh, good morning to one and all, Chairman, thank you.
Thank you, Honorable Freeland. Honorable Kialan Bagay Jr. Honorable Stewart. Honorable Stewart is excused today. Welcome, everybody.
Good morning, Chair members of RDC, those online. My name is Rodney Tahi. I am the Legislative Advisor for Resource and Development Committee. I'm Kianani and Sanja Kene, and I'm originally from Steen, Arizona. And I want to say thank you Delegate Daniels for that beautiful prayer to start the day. Back to you, Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Tahi. Mr. Mose.
Morning, Chair and all the guests online.
Thank you, Mr. Mose. I don't care about it, I miss calm. None. We'll go down to our other colleagues that are on the call with us today. Honorable Purnell Holon.
Uh, yeah, hey, uh, can you all hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, yeah, hey, I'm not sure. Uh, good morning, everybody. Uh, this is Delegate Purnell Holona. And, uh, thank you for having us. And thank you for the introduction, uh, Chairman, and, uh, uh, good morning, uh, uh, RDC members. Uh, good to hear everybody this morning. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, Honorable Holona. Honorable Eugene So.
Hi, good morning.
Thank you, Honorable So. Honorable Paul Bagay.
Yeah, I've been, uh, uh, Honorable Chair Rick Nez. Uh, so, uh, she's not a vice chair. Delegate Thomas Walker, members of RDC. She did, uh, she did Paul Bagay. Wanted to join in the meeting and always interesting to listen to RDC. God bless.
Thank you, Honorable Bagay. Honorable Chairman Otto So.
Yeah, uh, I've been. So, uh, members of the Resource and Development Committee members. And the staff, uh, she, uh, so.
Yeah. Yeah, Honorable Chairman So. Honorable Vice Chair Raymond Smith Jr. Vice Chair Smith.
Oh, yeah, there's a chair, uh, my best and I give RDC. Other than I, good morning, Vice Chair. Other than that, prayer behind the. Hey, how Raymond Smith Jr., this is Janito, um, RDC members. I see, but hey, it's been raining. It's been beautiful. We're on the air. We need that rain. Uh, one thing I just want to announce. Chair, uh, the RDC members, uh, need legislation.
Yeah, here's the two, Honorable Vice Chair Smith. Honorable Chairman Jamie Heneo.
Uh, good morning, Chairman Nez. Resource Development Committee. Uh, the, uh, I, uh, I, uh, I believe.
Oh, thank you, Honorable Chairman Heneo. Honorable Nathaniel Brown. Honorable Brown.
Well, uh, yeah, that's enough. Our Resource and Development Committee.
Thank you, Honorable Brown. Honorable Jimmy Yellowhair.
Yeah, that's been a good morning to the Chairman, Honorable Rick Nez. Uh, the, uh, Resource Development Committee members. We're sending here for the agenda coming through today. Uh, she, uh, yeah. So, he did, uh, he was like, good morning. I'm on the agenda.
Yeah, so now. Honorable Yellowhair. I recently, uh, I must talk to, that is not taggy. Those of you that are, that got, just got on the call, now colleagues. I hear, the nation. I hear, so now, I know, I think, do, uh, that's called nature. Uh, on the council floor. So, thank you all very much and God bless you. We'll move down on the agenda, but first of all, we would like to say welcome to everybody that are on the call with us today. We have a long agenda, so we're gonna have to write, go right into taking care of business today. We have no reports. So, number three on the agenda, Mr. Tahi, could you read the agenda, sir?
Chair members of RDC, you have your proposed agenda. Resource and Development Committee of the Twenty-Fourth Navajo Nation Council, regular meeting, Wednesday, October fifth, two thousand twenty-two, ten AM. Presiding Honorable Ricky Nez, Chairperson. Honorable Thomas Walker Jr., Vice Chairperson. Location via telecommunications. One, called meeting to order, roll call invocation announcement. Two, recognizing guests and visiting officials. Three, reviewing and approving the agenda. Four, reviewing and approving the journals. September twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-two, regular meeting. Five, receiving reports, none. All business, none. Seven, new business. A, Legislation Zero One Seven One Dash Two Two, An Act Relating to the Resource and Development Committee and the Budget and Finance Committee, Accepting the Auditor General's Audit of the Black Mesa Chapter and Approving the Chapter's Proposed Corrective Action Plan. B, Legislation Number Zero One Seven Two Dash Two Two, An Act Relating to Resource and Development Committee and Budget and Finance Committee, Accepting the Auditor General's Audit of the National Commission Governance and Approving the Chapter's Proposed Corrective Action Plan. C, Legislation Number Zero One Seven Four Dash Two Two, An Act Relating to Resource and Development Committee, Certifying Anna Chapter Community-Based Land Use Plan, Which Has Reevaluated and Readjusted Anna's Chapter's Previous Community-Based Land Use Plan. D, Legislation Number Zero One Five Dash Two Two. An Act Generalating to Resource Development Committee and Nobbyke Committee, Supporting the United States Congressional Bill HR Eight One Zero Eight Title, Advancing Tribal Partitioning. Partically Audit Public Land Areas. E, Legislation Number Zero One Seven Six Dash Two Two, An Act Relating to the Resource and Development, Budget, Finance, and Nobbyke Committees, and to the Navajo Nation Council, Allocating Ten Million One Hundred and Fifty Nine Thousand Five Hundred Forty Two from the Sisasun Fund To Replace the Rema Navajo School Board Drinking Water System, Approving the Related Expenditure Plan. F, Legislation Number Zero One Eight Zero Dash Two Two, An Act Relating to Resource and Development, Law and Order, Budget, Finance, and Nobbyke Committees, and the Navajo Nation Council, Authorizing the Attorney General To Advance Fixed Cost Litigation Account Funds To Support the Legal Fees Attributed to the Individual Federal Tort Claims Act Case File By Approximately Three Hundred Individual Tribal Members For Money Damage Caused By the Gold speaking Mines Bill, Waiting to NNC Section One Nine Six One B and One Nine Six Four B. G, Legislation Zero One Eight One Dash Two Two, An Act Relating to Resource and Development and Budget and Finance Committees, Approving a Change to CAP Dash Thirty Five Dash Eighteen For Noshiti Chapter By Moving the Chopser Cemetery Expansion Project From Funding Year One to Funding Year Three With No Changes in Original Funding Amount of Fifty Thousand. H, Legislation Number Zero One Eight Two Dash Two Two, An Act Relating to the Resource and Development, Budget, Finance, and Nobbyke Committees and to the Navajo Nation Council, Approving Nine Hundred and Seventy Thousand From the Sisasun Fund For the Demolition and Cleanup For Four Former Business Sites Under the Chinley RBDO And Approving the Related Expenditure Plan. I, Legislation Number Zero One Eight Three Dash Two Two, An Act Relating to the Resource and Development and Budget and Finance Committee, Approving a Change in CAP Dash Thirty Five Dash Eighteen For Round Rock Chapter By Moving the the Chapters Of Signage Proposal Project From Funding Year One to Funding Year Three And Adding Equipment Purchases To the Project With No Change in Original Funding Amount of Thirty Three Thousand One Hundred Ninety Eight and Fifty Cent. J, Legislation Number Zero One Eight Five Dash Two Two, An Act Relating to the Resource and Development Committee, Waiting the Navajo Nation Road Fund Regulations, Approving the Navajo Nation Division of Transportation, Navajo Nation Road Fund Project, Budget Extension In The Amount Of Six Million One Hundred Eighty Nine Thousand Three Hundred Thirty Five And Three Cent To Allow For Funds For Twenty Six Road Projects To Be Used Beyond The Date And Fiscal Year In Which The Funds Were Allocated And Extended. K, Legislation Number Zero One Five Seven Dash Two Two, An Act Relating to Law and Order, Health Education, Human Services, Resource and Development, Budget and Finance, and Nobbyke Committee and the Navajo Nation Council, Amending CAP Dash Thirty Five Dash Eighteen, Sisasun Fund Power Line and Chapter Project Expenditure Plan To Extend Project's Completion Deadline For Additional Twenty Four Months. Eight, Close of Meeting Announcements And Enterment. Chair members of RDC, that is the proposed agenda written to the record. Back to you, Chairman.
Thank you very much, Mr. Tahi, for reading the agenda into the record. Honorable members of the Resources and Development Committee members, Let's establish a motion and a second. On motion, Freeland. Thank you, Honorable Freeland. Second.
Mr. Chair.
Honorable Daniels. Honorable Daniels, second the motion. Honorable members of RDC, any comments or questions?
Mr. Chair, this is, uh, Council Delegate Herman Daniel.
Honorable Daniels, you have the floor.
Yes, um, thank you. We had meetings, leadership meetings. And another thing is, um, uh, we really need to sit down and talk about roads. With the counties. Um, like before Utah, it's San Juan County. Out of Arizona, Coconino, Navajo County, and Patchy County. Out of, um, New Mexico, McKinley, Donana, San Juan County. I don't know, I believe there's, um, other counties in New Mexico. So, um, that's the key on our Navajo reservation. Uh, with the recent, um, with the, with the, this, uh, monsoon, I don't know, the rainstorm that we're, we're getting. Um, my, my question is, when are we gonna go back out to the, the communities?
Uh, thank you very much, Honorable Daniels. When we went to Halchita, we did tell them we were gonna come back within about a month and a half. We can put that on the agenda for approval as well as, um, Blinding Utah, Westwater. Westwater has other. And the other one was with the Ana Chapter and Red Mesa Chapter. So, there's three follow-ups that we need to do. Um, part in the Utah. Honorable Daniels, uh, we can work with Mr. Tahi and find a date for the three. Halchita and then Ana and then Westwater at Blinding. And do follow-up meetings because they are expecting us and over at Halchita, the Utah, um, the Development Group, I believe, needed to be present for that meeting as well as, um, Land Department was there with us. And I believe BIA needs to at least be there from Tuba City. So, I, uh, Honorable Daniels, we can, if you would like to add it to the agenda for approval, uh, we can do that.
Um, Mr. Chair, um, um, I'll go ahead and make that motion to add, um, the three, um, that was mentioned, um, to go back out to Halchita. I believe there's gonna be two meetings, and a one with DOJ. Is, um, the thirty-two point agreement. Meeting with, um, Elk Petroleum and also Navajo Nation Oil and Gas. I didn't get the other one, either, right, um, Westwater Community. Thank you.
Um, Honorable Daniels. I believe that, um, October is filled up. Honorable Daniels. So we're gonna have to work in November begin. And Mister Tye, if you if you could block off three days. Halchita. Blinding. And Montezuma and at the snow, it was at Montezuma Creek. And that thirty two point agreement, if you would find some dates and then perhaps add it to the agenda. For the next R D C meeting. That way we will already know a dates has been set aside in November, Mister Tye.
The chair members of R D C, I will do that and the chairman, as you are correct. The October calendar for R D C is filled. So we will start looking in November and I will schedule three dates back to back for all three meetings, all three follow ups. Back to you, Chairman.
Uh, thank you for that, Mister Tye. Uh, Honorable Daniels, so if you would withdraw your motion. Since uh, Mister Tye's gonna block off three days in November. And then we'll put it on the next R D C agenda.
Uh, yes, Mr. Chair. I'll withdraw my motion.
Okay, thank you. So it'll it'll be pretty much blocked off for you, three days in a row for that, thank you. Honorable members of R D C, any other comments or questions on the agenda approval? I hear none, we'll go ahead and vote on it. Honorable Vice Chair Walker, how do you vote?
Chairman, I vote green.
Thank you. Honorable Begay. Honorable Daniels.
Green.
Thank you. Honorable Freeland. Honorable Stewart. Thank you, Honorable Freeland. Honorable Stewart. We have a vote of three in favor, zero opposed, chair not voting, motion carries. Number four on the agenda reviewing and proving journals from September twenty eighth. This was sent to us by Mister Mose, let's have a motion and a second.
Chairman, I motion.
Thank you, Honorable Vice Chair Walker. Second by. Honorable Daniels, thank you. Any comments or questions? I hear none, Honorable Vice Chair Walker, how do you vote?
I vote green.
Thank you. Honorable Begay. Honorable Daniels.
Green.
Thank you. Honorable Freeland. Honorable Freeland.
Green.
Thank you, Honorable Freeland. We have a vote of three in favor, zero opposed, chair not voting, motion carries. Number five, receiving reports, none. Number six, old business, none. Number seven, new business. Honorable Jimmy Yellowhair, are you on the call, sir? Honorable Jimmy. Okay, thank you.
I'm on the call.
Okay, thank you, Mister Tye. Uh, under new business, A legislation zero one seven one dash twenty two, could you read that into the record, sir?
The chair members of R D C, you have summary of proposed legislation tracking number zero one seven one dash two. Day September twenty second, two thousand twenty two. An act relating to the resource and budget. Resource and Development Committee and Budget Finance Committee accepting the Auditor General's audit of the Black Mesa Chapter and approving the chapter's proposed corrective action plan. Purpose of this legislation is to accept the audit of the Black Mesa Chapter and the chapter's proposed corrective action plan. Budget Finance Committee has final authority over this legislation, which be read into the record in its entirety. The primary sponsor of this legislation is Honorable Jimmy Yellowhair. For tracking number zero one seven one dash two two. An act relating to the Resource and Development Committee and the Budget Finance Committee. They accepting the Auditor General's audit of the Black Mesa Chapter. And approving the chapter's proposed corrective action plan. In section one outlines the authority in section two is the findings which. Includes an exhibit A, an exhibit B, an exhibit C, and exhibit D. Exhibit A is the audit report, exhibit B is a. Is the chapter's um, letter dated September twenty first, two thousand twenty two. Exhibit C is a chapter's proposed corrective action plan and exhibit D is a resolution. Attached um, included is a section three, accepting the Auditor General's audit of the Black Mesa Chapter and approving the chapter's proposed corrective action plan. Which includes an exhibit A and exhibit C and section four is a directive. And section five is the effective date and say and section six is a savings clause. Attached you have exhibit A, which is the office of the Auditor General Navajo Nation. The the internal audit of the Black Mesa Chapter. Report number twenty one twenty, which was issued on September twenty 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 one. Attaches exhibit B, which is a letter dated September twenty first of two thousand and twenty one. Attaches exhibit C, which is the Black Mesa. Chapter Audit Report Number twenty twenty one, the corrective action plan. Attaches exhibit D, which is a resolution of the Black Mesa Chapter. Number B M C dash two two dash zero five dash zero six five, supporting and approving. Supporting and approving the corrective action plan for Black Mesa Chapter Financial Audit Report. Number twenty one dash twenty, internal findings. Then you have the first report, the Navajo Nation Legislative Branch Internet Public Review Summary for Legislation Number zero one seven one dash two. Two sponsors, Honorable Jimmy Yellowhair. This legislation was posted on September twenty third, two thousand twenty two at four thirty nine P M. The five day comment period ended September twenty eighth, two thousand and twenty two. There was no comment supporting this legislation, there was no comments opposing this legislation. And there was no comments or recommendation on this legislation. Chair members of R D C, that is legislation number zero one seven one dash two two, read into the record, back to you, Chairman.
Thank you very much, Mister Tye for reading that legislation into the record. Honorable members of R D C, let's have a motion and a second.
Motion.
Thank you, Honorable Daniels. Second by.
Chairman, I'll second that.
Thank you, Honorable Vice Chair Walker. Will give some time to the Auditor General's office. Please identify yourself.
Uh, good. Good morning, this is Beverly Tom Senior Auditor with the Office of the Auditor General.
Thank you, Ms. Tom, for getting on the call. You have the floor at this time to do your presentation.
Uh, thank you, um, committee members and Mister Chair. Um, I'll be um, providing a presentation of the internal audit of the Black Mesa Chapter Report Number twenty one dash twenty. And this was a audit that was conducted by the our office in conjunction with Newberry and Associates. There were six findings that were um, identified for a Black Mesa Chapter. Um, that our objectives for this um. Audit was financial transaction are authorized, valid and properly recorded permit to preparation of financial figures. And other financial reports. That is our safeguardage. Chapter activities addressed by the five management systems comply with applicable laws and regulations. The audit did cover a twelve month period from April first, twenty twenty through March thirty first, twenty twenty. And in meeting our audit objectives, um. Newberry and Associate did interview the C S C through the chapter officials. And the A S C staff and we also did, they also did examine some records. Um, for their test samples that were selected for the expenditures. And I'll go into the audit findings. Um, the first finding, the chapter property was not consistently tagging accounted for on the property inventory. We did um, test against the five management system of the property managed policies and procedures. There were twenty four property and equipment item, I items valued at four hundred and seventy eight, one hundred and twenty eight dollars. That were reported on the underwriting exposure summary, they did examine nineteen that. Of those items valued at four hundred seventy seven hundred three hundred and sixty three. And they did confirm that they were tagged. But they also did find some. Deficiencies within those um, testing. They identified that four items from a previous underwriting exposure reported value at nine thousand eight hundred thirty seven that had. Not been added to the current underwriting exposure report. Eight items, equipment were examined on the chapter premises that were not tagged and were not included in the current underwriting exposure report. These items included a pallet forklift, two steer frame shelters, one stove and pipe, one whiteboard and three dollies. The current underwriting exposure report of property and equipment has not been reconciled to the fixed assets. Reflected at three hundred and twenty five thousand one hundred and twelve on the balance sheet. Second finding. The chapter does not maintain detailed records of resale inventory items showing the description, cost, quantity and location of all. Resale inventories. Um, they did test against the five management system, the fiscal policies and procedures regarding the resale inventory. It was determined that the M I P software was not being fully utilized to maintain a perpetual hay inventory. The chapter purchased hay in the amount of twenty one thousand four hundred and forty eight for the twelve month period. The revenue from hay sales was fifteen thousand six hundred and eighty two. The quantities of the hay purchase and sold was not consistently maintained in the in the M I P accounting software. No monthly fiscal. Hay inventory was taken on on a consistent basis. There was no reconciliation between the physical hay inventory and the hay inventory quantities maintained in the county's software. Finding three. The chapter does not consistently follow bank reconciliation policies regarding voided checks. Um, we all, we did, um, they did. Test against the five management system again, fiscal policies and procedures. And this is regarding to the checks of the outstanding checks. Um, it was determined that they were multiple voided checks from April twenty twenty through March twenty twenty first. Due to the limited bookkeeping background, the C S C recorded multiple debit and credit. Related to certain voided checks that were examined. There is no written documentation to support these multiple transactions. It was determined that six chapter numbers were, I'm sorry, six check numbers were missing. Inquiry inquiry with the C S C was determined that six checks were never recorded in the general ledger because. They have been voided. These six checks were accounted for in the chapter void file. Uh, finding four, cash disbursements were made without proper support documentation and chapter approval. Again, we did, they did um, test against the five management sys- system, fiscal policies and procedures regarding the disbursement. Section. Um, there were thirty two cash disbursements totaling one hundred and eighty five thousand one hundred and forty four that were looked at. And they noted the following. There were twenty two incomplete fund approval forms, including the following issues, no fund number nor general ledger number. Date of signatures missing, C S C signatures missing and official signature missing. There were six disbursements that did not have required written quotes, there were one disbursement that did not have written documentation to. Support a qualified contractor. There was one disbursement that did not have written documentation to support a stipend paid related to a chapter meeting. One disbursement was paid, was made payable to an individual individual when it should have been made payable to the contracted vendor. One disbursement of twenty three thousand six hundred and forty three was not budgeted and a resolution was not provided. Finding five, the chapter does not have proper segregation. Again, we did, they looked at the fiscal policies and procedures of the F M S. The C S C is preparing the fund approval forms and the checks. The C S C coordinator is also signing the checks and preparing the monthly reconciliation. Therefore, the current duties of the C S C are not segregated. Finding six payroll tax deposits and tax report filings are dealing dealing big. Um, again, this was tested against the fiscal policies and procedures. Regarding the quarterly payroll tax deposit. They did find that three of the eight payroll tax deposits that were examined were deposited late. Two of the payroll tax deposit examined were deposit one month late and one was deposit two months late. And we did provide recommendations for each of the findings. And there is a letter in within the. Um, this report that the chapter did accept the findings has a September twenty first, twenty twenty one. And they did prepare a corrective action plan that we did work with the chapter and. Um, the chapter officials and the chapter did obtain a chapter resolution. Meaning that the chapter officials presented the corrective action plan. And the audit report to the community membership. And that was approved on May sixteen, twenty twenty two. And that will conclude my presentation.
Thank you very much, Ms. Tom. Honorable Jimmy Yellowhair, could you identify your agent, sir?
Okay, here and honest to determine. Now, here, I would like to identify my agent as from the Black Mesa Chapters. Chapter President Larry Belta. And the vice president is Lynn Dean. And also a chapter coordinator, Mister Albert Lee. Once uh, that I did talk, I guess, case in the. Out of uh, May third at uh, we're gonna be on the agenda today. Double team nation and uh, chairman. Yeah, teaching by the D A Larry Belta. I don't.
Okay. Okay, you do have twenty minutes, I already started your time, uh, chapter president, please identify yourself. Chapter officials.
Um, this is Marlene Belta, chapter.
I can barely hear you.
Okay, um, Marlene Belta, chapter secretary and treasurer.
You may proceed.
Okay, um, I work with the other two officials with C S C to develop the corrective action plan. And we also work with the with um, Beverly Tom and her assistant doing in their office. And it took us like um, probably six times to go over it and finally they accepted our corrective action plans. Although um. We have um. Indicated that um, after each transaction that one of the chapter official will verify. Will verify by signing off on the documents before further um, action can be taken like. Um, tagging and then also the retail sale where there were some discrepancies and. We did um, explain to the auditors at that time when they were on site. That um, I guess we just need to record the spoil uh, the spoiled item. And that was never done before, so that is being taken care of right now by C S C. When there's a. When there's a hay that been delivered and one that has been busted, all of those were made unaccounted for, and it wasn't recorded correctly. So we got those all in order right now, and also with the tagging, they have tagged all the chapter equipment and identified them by numbers. And then on the bank reconciliation policy, also that C S C will complete that on a monthly basis. And also if there was any outstanding checks that haven't been cash or deposited within three months, it will be voided and reissue another check. So those are some of the procedures that have been in place right now with C S C. And he was the only one that's been in there taking care of the whole chapter operation for over three years. And that's the time when we got audit, and we didn't have A M C or other office helper or anything. And this is the time during, just right when the pandemic also started. And then as the monthly bank reconciliation is completed, I, or the chapter president, will be signing to say that it has been completed accordingly and make sure that all outstanding checks are still, um, identified. And then with the cash disbursement, before any checks are written out for anybody, there has to be a packet that goes around with all the required signatures before any check has been issued. And that's what A S C have been doing, assisting our chapter since the audit has been completed. And A S C from Chile office has been sending one of their workers up and work with C S C. And now finally, A M S has been hired just recently, and this week is his, last week might have been her first week and went on M I P training. So those has been taken care of also, and it's being noted at our chapter meeting, that make sure that some of these documents are in place on a monthly basis, all the monthly reports. And then with the segregation duties within the office, as like I mentioned before, we had C S C is the only person that was in there for the, probably more than three years, once it had been vacant by the previous. So, um, right now, we do have A M S that has been hired. So I'm sure that segregation of duties will take place soon. And that A S C has been acting as A M S for the last year and a half. Have been doing our monthly financial report, printing out checks, and making sure all the required documents are attached to those requests before any checks has been dispersed. And then payroll tax deposit, C S C has been on a timely basis doing on his monthly deposit. And, um, we do check all this before we sign our, um, the form to indicate that all our supporting documents, all the financial documents and financial reports have been completed at the end of the month, at our planning meeting or at our chapter meeting. A D H O T.
Thank you. Honorable Yellowhair, back to you.
Okay, I have to determine, Honorable Rick Neff, and I would like to say thank you to Sir Edith, Edith Marlene Belta. Thank you for assisting the other three chapter president, vice president, and also assisting the chapters of coordinators that we have. Mr. Albert Lee also can't give a floor if any other, uh, justifications retained to audit. So, and, uh, uh, to the chairman. I don't have, uh, uh, R D C committee, grown to honor the status to the chairman, Rick Neff.
Thank you, Honorable Yellowhair. Honorable members of R D C, do you have any comments or questions on legislation zero-one-seventy-one dash twenty-two? It's a corrective action plan for Black Mesa chapter. Going twice? Going three times?
Yep.
We'll go ahead and vote. Yes?
Chairman Freeland.
Honorable Freeland, go ahead. Honorable Freeland, you have the floor. Honorable Freeland.
Chairman, I'm sorry, I was on mute. Um, yeah, the chairman, Resource Development Committee members, not any other, uh, Honorable Yellowhair. Uh, officials, not any other, Black Mesa, uh, good morning. Um, just a question for the team auditor generally, was this a prior administrative team or prior officials administration that was, uh, that had all this conducted previously? That's my question, Edia. Thank you.
Thank you, Honorable Freeland. Honorable Jimmy Yellowhair.
Thank you very much, uh, here and honor, um, Rick Neff. Thank you for the questions, uh, Mr. Freeland. I'd like to turn the floor over to our chapter coordinator, to Albert Lee, and on to a Marlene Belta.
Mr. Lee. Mr. Lee, you have the floor.
Hello, good morning. Um, yeah, this is, um, this is our second audit that we had. And we had the same problem with the last one with the segregation of duties. And the chapter officials are different. We didn't have different ones in there before. So we do have new ones again in this audit that we had. Like they said, I was in here by myself since August two thousand and eighteen. And they had this audit last in two thousand twenty, twenty-one. So, um, you can ask Marlene.
Ms. Marlene.
Okay, um, we did, during the audit period, the years that they had audit, we had previous officers in there. And, um, that we just, I've been in there before. This is like my third term. But with the new officers that came in, we have worked with them that how we're gonna, um, they're not very knowledgeable in the accounting system and all that. But we have, um, review the audit findings and review some of the corrective action plans that we have developed and respond to the findings and all that. Um, they have pretty good knowledge of what's going on. And, um, I guess majority of our probably chapter officials are not very knowledgeable in the coding system with the chapter. That's where they might need more training. And, um, but besides that, um, we are gonna, going forward with what we have in our corrective action plan. And currently, we are practicing it with the C S C and A M S that just came in right now. And A S C, Chile A S C has been tremendous help in assisting us with some of the findings to make it correct and to make it into a workable environment with our chapter.
Are you done?
Oh.
Okay, thank you. Honorable Freeland, do you have a follow-up question?
Oh, I don't, Chairman, I appreciate the response. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Honorable members of R D C, any other comments or questions? I hear none. Honorable Vice Chair Walker, how do you vote? Honorable Vice Chair Walker votes green according to his text message. Go ahead, Honorable Vice Chair Walker.
Yes, Chairman, I vote green. Thank you.
Thank you. Honorable Bigay. Honorable Daniels.
I vote green.
Thank you. Honorable Freeland. Honorable Freeland.
I vote green, Chairman.
Honorable, thank you, Honorable Freeland. Honorable Stewart is excused. We have a vote of three in favor, zero opposed, turn of voting, motion carries. Thank you, Honorable Jimmy Yellowhair, chapter officials and coordinator. Chairman.
The chairman, this is Deputy Yellowhair. I don't have, uh, R D C committee, thank you very much for this opportunity. But we will move on to Budget Finance Committee and, uh, as for Black Mesa Council, I'm looking forward to improve some way to get to see our accountability and improvement so we can move on to be recognized as chapter, certified chapter sooner the better. So our community will meet our needs in Black Mesa. There's a lot of needs to be done. Yeah, so we can benefit out of it when becoming certified chapters. Once the dollar, yeah, I didn't either, so not on the chairman, now, so vice chairman, Walter, still. Don't think so, Iggy, uh, R D C committee, I say, thanks a million. Yeah, though it's enough, I don't, so not on it, I'm finished. All that, yeah, once the, on us, but still, Chairman.
Uh, thank you, Honorable Jimmy Yellowhair and chapter officials. Just for your information, there's a local governance seminar that will take place at Twin Arrows Navajo Casino Resort. It will be on October twenty-fifth from eight o'clock to five o'clock P M. Just for your information. Thank you. B, next legislation, zero-one-seventy-two dash twenty-two. Vice Chair Smith, are you on the call with us still? Honorable Vice Chair Smith, are you still on the call with us? Press star six to unmute. Honorable Vice Chair Smith. Okay, we'll go down to C. Honorable Nathaniel Brown, are you on the call? Uh, Mr. Tahie, is Honorable Smith on the call?
Chairman, I don't see Delegate Raymond Smith on the call. I did text him and let him know his legislation is up.
Okay, Honorable Brown.
Yes, this is Daniel.
Yes, uh, so now this is Delegate Brown, I'm on the line.
Uh, Honorable Daniels.
Um, Mr. Chair, um, I'd just, um, spend the floor rules. And, um, but, um, Delegate Raymond Smith's legislation in the back, at the end of the legislation. But, um, he requested, he text me, asking for me to do that, but I don't have, Mr. Chair.
Um, Honorable Daniels, we don't need to spend the floor rules. We'll just go through all the legislations and come back to him at the end. Will that work, Honorable Daniels?
Yes, Mr. Chair, that will. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next legislation, C zero-one-seventy-four dash twenty-two. Sponsor Honorable Nathaniel Brown is on the call. Mr. Tahie, could you read this into the record? Resource and Development Committee has final authority on this legislation. Mr. Tahie.
Chairman, members of R D C, you have legislative summary sheet, tracking number zero-one-seven-four dash two-two, date September twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-two. Title, the resolution proposed standing committee resolution, an action relating to Resource and Development Committee, certifying Anna chapter community-based land use plan, which has reevaluated and readjusted Anna's chapter's previous community-based land use plan. Purpose, the chapter are required to reevaluate and readjust their initial community-based land use plan every five years. The purpose of this legislation is for the Resource and Development Committee to certify Anna's chapter's new community-based land use plan, which has been reevaluated and readjusted since the chapter's previous command, community-based land use plan was approved. Resource and Development has final authority over this legislation. The primary sponsor of this legislation is Honorable Nathaniel Brown, tracking number zero-one-seven-four dash two-two. An action relating to Resource and Development Committee, certifying Anna's chapter community-based land use plan, which has reevaluated and readjusted Anna's chapter's previous community-based land use plan. Be enacted, section one, authority, the Resource and Development Committee pursuant to twenty-six N N C section two-zero-zero-four D two, sell certified community-based land use plans. Be pursuant to twenty-six N N C section two-zero-zero-four D two. Every five years, the plan shall be reevaluated and readjusted to meet the needs of the changing community. And such readjustment is subject to the certification of the Resource and Development Committee of the Navo Nation Council. C pursuant to twenty-six N N C section two-zero-zero-four B, community-based land use plan. The chapter, at a duly chapter column meetings by resolution, vote to implement a community-based land use plan after the club C has educated the community on the constant needs and process for planning and implementing the community-based land use plan. The community band base land use plan shall project future community land needs shown by location and extent of areas identified for residential, commercial, industrial, and public purpose. The land use plan shall be based upon the guiding principle envisioned as articulated by the community, along with information revealed in investors and assessments of the natural culture, human resources, and community infrastructure. And finally, the consideration for the land carry capacity. Such a plan may also include the following: one, an open space plan which preserves for the people certain areas to be retained in their natural state or developed for recreational purpose. Two, a thorough, thorough fair plan which provides information about the existing and proposed road networks in relation to the land use of the surrounding areas. Three, a community facility plan which shows the location type capacity areas served of the present and projected of required community facilities, including but not limited to recreation areas, schools, libraries, and other public buildings. It would also show related public utilities and services and indicate how these services are associated with future land use. Section two, findings, Anna chapter adopted resolution A C J U L dash two-two dash zero-five-six approving and adopting the Anna's chapter community use plan. Club and require the Resource and Development Committee of the twenty-four Navo Nation Council to grant recertification of the community-based land use plan. Resolution A C J U L dash two-two dash zero-five-six is attached as exhibit A. B, the Anna chapter community-based land use plan is attached as exhibit B. C, the Anna chapter community-based loose plan vision statement states. vision statement states, advancing our people by promoting a stronger community through comprehensive planning for economic self-sufficient and politically self-determined government for the future, for the present and the future. Aneth chapter community-based land use plan at page eleven of the community assessment section. D, the Resource and Committee predecessors of the Resource and Development Committee approved resolution, RDC dash two-one-six dash nine-nine on December ninth, nineteen ninety-nine, in which the Resource Committee of the Navajo Nation Council hereby requests each community of the Navajo Nation designate lands for community cemeteries in accordance with title thirteen Navajo Nation Code. E, the Aneth chapter's community-based lose plan map on page one-oh-five, exhibit B identifies an existing cemetery. Section three, certification of Aneth chapter reevaluate and readjusted community band-based land use plan. The Resource and Development Committee of the Navajo Nation Council hereby certifies and reevaluate the readjusted Aneth chapter community-based land use plan attached here to exhibit B. Attaches exhibit A, which is the resolution of the Aneth chapter, ACJUL dash two-two zero-five-six, entitled approving and adopting the Aneth chapter community land use plan and requesting the Resource and Development Committee of the twenty-fourth Navajo Council to grant recertification of the community land use plan. Attaches exhibit B, which is the Aneth chapter comprehensive community-based land use plan, two thousand and twenty-two, that attaches the first report Navajo Nation Legislative Branch Internet Public Review Summary for legislation number zero-one-seven-four dash two-two. Sponsor's Honorable Nathaniel Brown, this legislation was posted on September twenty-six, two thousand and twenty-two at eight fifty PM. The five-day comment period ended October first, two thousand and twenty-two. There was no comment supporting this legislation, there was no comment opposing this legislation, and there was no comments or recommendation on this legislation. Chairman members of RDC, that is legislation number zero-one-seven-four dash two-two, run into the record. Back to you, Chairman.
Thank you very much, Mr. Tahie, for reading the legislation and for the record, Honorable Members of RDC, let's have a motion and a second.
Motion, Daniel.
Thank you, Honorable Daniels.
Second motion, Freeland.
Thank you, Honorable Freeland. And, uh, do you have any comments or questions? RDC has final authority on this legislation.
Chairman, Freeland.
Okay, uh, Honorable Brown, you have twenty minutes to present, sir, and also identify your agents.
Oh, yeah, uh, Shenan, I do, Chair, I've resourced in the development committee and to the committee members. I do, Shenan, uh, I do, um, in each decade Nathaniel Brown, I don't they, my agents are Mr. Darrell Williams and Mr. Wesley Jones, who are both on the call for this legislation, zero, uh, one-seven-four dash twenty-two for Aneth chapter, Club C manual update. So, D, D, G, um, not up in knowledge, as, as RDC is aware, um, the work goes in for all the hundred and ten chapters, uh, for the Club C manual to, for, for, for the update. Uh, some of the key points that, um, are updated is the, uh, you know, of course, with the recent census, census data, the master plan are included in there as well. Uh, the road, um, plans are updated, the solid waste is also included in this. And one of the big things that, there's another legislation is, um, the Elk Petroleum map included to show all land leases as well. So a lot of, um, really good information that impact our my head, oh, and she didn't, uh, uh, they, must have, they, Kedah, I mean, uh, just, taught us, and, and, and needed, up in on, she did, uh, out of the Club C members. So, uh, a lot of, so, Chair would like to, um, introduce, um, there's also Mr. Emerson Phillips, who is the Aneth chapter vice president as well. Uh, here sitting on Budget and Finance Committee, we always, and, and all twenty-four delegates, we always try to help each other out where we can through the one hundred and ten chapters. I would like to give time to, uh, my, my agents, um, so if we can allow the chapter officials and the chapter manager on line here. Uh, so, 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 give them some time, yeah.
Uh, yes, Honorable Brown, they, they may make a statement at this time. Thank you.
Uh, yes, good afternoon. My name is Darrell Williams, and I'm the Aneth chapter manager. Appreciate, uh, this legislation coming for you, as, um, Honorable Brett Brown had mentioned, just a few quick updates, pay on page eleven of the community land use planning, we have our leasing, uh, Elk Petroleum, as you know, and I'm sure you're aware of the oil company activity up here. There's a lot of limited development potential within this area mainly because of the oil leases that are, um, established within this community, so, uh, well, we took those into consideration when updating our community land use plan. Um, and then also with the, um, on page six to nine of the community land use plan, we also have some proposed, um, improvements to the state highway system right there by the Department of Transportation, expansion, and then building around about, so we also included that. Um, as the biggest change that we've, um, have within our land use plan is, on page one-hundred and six, we have a master plan that we've been working on for the past few years, twenty-four acre land withdrawal, and as you can see, it includes many new facilities as a chapter house, senior center, as well as eight acres set aside for public safety, facility substations, and judicial buildings. Um, so with that, uh, if there's any other question, I'll turn it over to, um, Shenan, I should say, Wesley Jones, chapter president.
Oh, good morning. Shenan, uh, I'd care, I mean, you know, I'd eat, uh, community, let us acknowledge your presence to this issue. And it's very important that you folks go ahead and support. I'd like to say thank you to Daniel and Freeman, in case of Ziligi, because, uh, the chapter manager just elaborated on the, what is being, uh, discussed, what is before the chapter community so that they can be seriously supported, to what they are, quite, uh, I want to see, and this issue has been blown in the making. The, the project that is being proposed, it's been, it started back in two thousand and seven, and it's still existing, and we're hoping to see materialize, so we'd like to request of you to support or effort for the benefit of the greater community of Aneth, Montezuma Creek, Kahoomesa, Ismay, and Hatch, and I could, uh, okay, and, and, so, they'd like to see this, uh, improvement of the new twenty-four acres that are created on the, the structure that's going to be there. They'd like to see, then, the, each time they see us, and each time they talk to us, they, they want to see how much progress is being made, with your honorable support and understanding. We would like to appreciate your support, thank you very much.
Uh, good morning, my name is Emerson, I'm the, uh, vice president for, uh, Aneth chapter. Um, I do, I need, what, uh, Shenan, I don't know, Linnig, I don't, so, I, uh, Ella, now, Linnig. You know, we really need, um, to put this Club C back in place, and I don't, I, yeah, I, when I, yeah, I, I'm still with that, you, and never caught, or the wall, oh, the issue, be, be, lah, I don't need, you, you see, when you get, uh, uh, um, Shenan, I, now, Linnig, uh, co, uh, quite, give, be, you caught, of, yeah, so we can plan for our community. The issue, but, uh, I don't need, uh, the issue, but, yeah, it, uh, they, you, 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 yeah, you, yeah, I, it, and, uh, uh, I need, I seen, so, I, you, uh, you, when I, I seen, I, uh, we, 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 we put a lot of time and effort into it. Ado ha xin sago be his ani bahar don do on the day be da. Ixin lenhu i chetren hasa ambi i chen. Akoa, but our most important thing is this is for our community and for the developments that. That the kua iki bapa yilki do, obenahi ta hi choi i peni ya iten ko. Ni ka dochia na xin lenha, danhlaan xi xin nan ta danhlinigi. To approve our klaxi so we can move forward with a lot of our project. Oh, on le de obenina ta ta ha de yine choi i bi bi benaso. Benanskutwa ni choi i peni ya iten lenho. I just want to say thank you for your time and and keha da.
Honorable Brown, are you done with your presentation? Honorable Brown?
Uh, yes. Um, that concludes, excuse me, I'm at the Presidential and Council Delegates Forum for this heavy cuff. But yes, um, that concludes my presentation and actually, um, let me. I don't know if Mr. Daryl Williams has anything to add. Um, we can give him some time.
Uh, he did spoke earlier. I would like to go ahead and go to the floor, Honorable Freeland, your comments or questions?
Chairman, thank you. Uh, good afternoon, Shantai. Ado, uh, Shantai, um, Honorable Brown, ado, um, Shantai, um. And this chapter, I just wanted to ask about, um, the sponsor about. Uh, this is Honorable Charlene So's chapter. And was there any reason for using another delegate? And, uh, it's a little, uh, I, I mean, I support it, but I just wanted to know, we just wanted to know what. If, if there was a, a specific reason or reason that Honorable So wasn't the sponsor, um, as this is one of her chapters. So this is, that's just my question, Chairman. Um, but I do support the legislation and, um, you know, I just want to, um. Ask if, if that was the case, if we make sure that we include all of our delegates, I guess. So, Edi Shantai, uh, that's my question, Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you, Honorable Freeland, for your question. Let me go to Honorable Nate Brown.
Okay, uh, okay, um, Shantai, na as kua iki na denki. Um, se obi kedi shkheki, e dinal to leh adashi. Shete jabe itanda, ado, e xin ba ba na hatu chau, ado. Ado, le agadi itahi, nakan da, nishi, ado, xin batiya hai itanda. Akoa, oh, what's a ideas of the hazard, ado she oh. Adit hadashaho, and also as a member of the Navajo Utah Commission as a vice chairperson. E as such, Utah, um, concerns issue, state issues. Ba ba ya de, so through that, uh, commission, through the Navajo Utah Commission. Also as the current vice chair, eh, with us on anis in khaniya. So that's, that's where, um, we try, we always try to help out the, uh, the state of Utah, the Navajo Nation on that side. So, kua doh, ask hi, che.
Thank you, Honorable Brown, for your response. Honorable Kialan Begay Junior.
Uh, Chairman, uh, Yate, uh, good morning, uh, can you hear me?
Uh, yes, we can hear you. Go ahead.
Oh, Yate, um, deep, uh, kui de xi, ba nasi, uh, Shantai. Uh, again, I don't have a problem in supporting the legislation. Akoko, uh, first, the first of all, uh, it talks about a lot of these, uh, development. Uh, in the, uh, uh, like the Amunazuma Creek Commercial Center Feasibility Study Bakage. It has a lot of like, uh, Dene College, Public Library, uh, Visitor Center. Waste Transfer Station, a new chapter house, Community Cemetery. Uh, Veterans Building, Senior Building, Nursing Home, uh, District Court Warehouse and so on. Um, and then in the Economic Development, uh, there's also, uh. It says desire by the chapter resident, there's grocery stores at the bakha laundromat. Um, fast food restaurant, hardware store, uh, a new post office. I mean, a lot of some of these areas, some, some of these, uh, topics, uh, it catches your eyes of, uh. How these particular situation comes into play. Um, good, uh, the, and the whole, we know. And I really don't know each hundred and ten, well, actually, I had no five of mine, uh, but not in detail at the same time. Akoko, deka earlier, I, I was on one of my, uh, chapter, um, uh, planning meeting. And I had two of them the other day as well. Akoko, ya yashti, okay. Chapter need lenaki, uh, there's a lot of situation. Beni chen, na hoti iki ndaho, ah. And, and, and as you know, uh, for three days, two days or three days, uh, my, uh, many fun chapter has been dealing with the flooding situation. Part of the, uh, community. And the biggest problem that we're facing and they've faced that I want to put on record is that. They didn't have enough, uh, resource, they didn't have enough funding, didn't have even equipment, insurance. They were told that they can't utilize equipments because, um, uh, there, there, there was no insurance coverage. Just because that there's a new, uh, fiscal year that kicked in. And then the chapter were told that they can't utilize any funding, uh, just because that they haven't implement these. Uh, funding into the, uh, system. So there's layers and layers and layers of situation that I know, uh, all of our chapters go through. And even as of today, my third email to the, the division director. They never haven't even responded to me to say that, okay, we're addressing it this way, we, we. Hoto ha ni da aten. So, has yo pez na xi iko ko. How do we equip our local chapter of their plan? Koto, hai ta, deka opa la si tli iko. Then, okay, what's next? And I kept, I kept saying this and I'll continue to say this, to say that, okay. Base so bichbi iyi ni ko ku la ya't e to leh, eh, sandi da, eh, hi. Especially the, uh, uh, again, a lot of people don't really like to talk about it, but more for, uh, the cemetery issue. As you know, a lot of our communities, two of my communities don't have community cemetery. And they resort to family plot. And then we get, we come into a situation where, uh, we're being pressured to say, yes, allow us to bury our loved ones. At the family plot and not the cemetery, community cemetery. Or the chapter may say that, okay, while we can't have you utilize our heavy equipment. To, uh, provide service for, uh, grave site digging. Because it's a, a community family, but only if it was at the, uh, community cemetery situation. So there's a lot of areas that we, our local chapter continues to be dealing with. So what's the assurance to the Anath chapter of our support to pass? To say that, okay, your vision, la na na seneki. Uh, jenki dena ba la na na senek, ha sha kota, be has ani bichni chabitni ni. Ha sha di ita, koto, base on linigi, be nchi bitni ni. Ha sha di ita, the eat support. And I sure like to hear directly from the division community development to say that, yes. Di ita bichha dilia, do, di ita be bika iji, koto, ni la ches, eh, sandi shata. It's just the chapter. And it is in a way awkward for the representative delegate is not presenting this legislation is also. To me is a concern, I don't know, I don't want to get into it. But how can you effectively of representing a chapter? That this is how you're so much eager to get this done of the document that we're going to be passing. Akoa, akua, I guess, a Shantai, and I apologize, local chapter officials, I'm sending you. There's no, 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 uh, this, I'm not trying to disrespect or, uh, make it any other way of the passing this legislation. But I just want to be on record to say that there's a bigger problem that we face. At the central level, at the agency level, that a lot of our program continues to not provide the sufficient services. That our local chapter proposes. You mean, you got RBDO, the Northern RBDO, or which RBDO are they under? The Anath chapter, the Economic Development, hashned na base so basona, I've seen a hotel, I've seen a convenience store, I've seen a laundromat. Well, uh, how much money are they able to say that, okay, this is your vision, this is how much we could help with? Do ha ni da aten. So that's the biggest problem I have, Shantai, Chairman. Whenever we have discussed these community land use plan, ha linigi. So base so bichbi, 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 bichbi prove it, eh, na. Ado, there's no specific statement directly from our programs of the division. To say that we hey, we're ready, ka opa la so sen, ka di ita, kodo she, uh, contracts. Adad, eh, do base so di ne la, bichtahtino, bich, bich, uh, bichbiti ni. Jo ha no go ku da, eh, ya't e to leh, eh, sandi. How do we change that? Aleta change it ni, aleta ati ni. And I just don't want to give false hope to the community and the chapter. To say that, yeah, we support it, but yes, you're on your own. And I believe that's basically what we're just going to say. Okay, yeah, I approve it, but, but, but I don't know, I, I probably won't even give you a penny for any of your plan. I mean, that, that's basically the situation. But again, yes, they do this type, they, they do need these type of documents for their planning purpose. Yes, ishi yashti, na na kasta leh. But then again, it's going to take them longer to get the resources, it's going to take them longer to get the funding. Akoko, deka, any other funding that be lamda is ni, how do we incorporate that for, for, for these type of, uh, uh, documents? And then there's other, uh, funding that's available out there. The USDA office that, that, eh, ki to, any other federal funding that's being available from the state, from the, from the, uh, federal. And even from the state, then, at the xin toho, or. So these are the things that come to mind, Chairman, and you've heard me say this a lot of time. Every time that we discuss a community land use plan legislation. How can we set aside some funding? Give them a seat, at least a seat money to say that, do, uh, do what you can. To initiate your overall plan with this funding and maybe even utilize it. To, uh, 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 use it as a cost share or use it as your matching fund. With other programs that you're seeking funding from. So, akut, uh, Chairman, I, I, I know, uh, I always say this. Oh, oh, oba nasi, ado, ashik ala na ni, nisen, oba, oi, oso, ahko, oba ya chelki, do, hita, da, achelita, choshet, ni xina, na, stosa. But again, this is a, 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 a committee effort. Uh, I believe that all of the program that is able to help each chapter is under our. In a way as we're the oversight committee, almost all of them. Akoa, akua iki, ki la ihi ta, deka, be la si tli, go go to give them the assurance. That by as long, as soon as you certify. That the motion that actually will to kick in. For the plan that they're aiming for, for their community, for the chapter. So, akua iki, and then the other thing too is that, uh, in the fiscal year twenty, twenty twenty-three budget, be la si tli. Yes, ashak doshi, I'm at fault, we're at fault. Because we didn't give sufficient funding to each of the chapters as well. Base of ados na asapandni chia, da stoa chia. Other even heavy equipment, and, and, eh, that's the situation that we, we encountered. Deka, dini baha si ki, that there's no heavy, there's no operator. But yet, in some, certain chapters, a lot of these heavy equipment graders, adad, eh, hita, having been gone miles. And it's been sitting there for more than a year or two years now. How do we address those in helping develop a lot of these programs? And even the local jurisdiction, and even coming to cell tower, that's one area as well. I mean, oh, 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 koto be has ani, obi be yil jijiko ko. I mean, why, when, when, I mean, I sure like to give this authority to the local chapter, let them. Spend the adju, maybe that's a source of income that they can assume. Rather than just going directly back to the Navajo Nation. Spend it a, kua iki, base on linigi, ya hien de, to the local AD. Ka pumbe la ni tleki, aji, bich, ban, ban nan tahto leh yin da, nishto leh. And I sure like to give, to say that I'm okay to have twelve thousand dollars be given. To the local chapter where these cell towers are being established. I mean, that, that, that's the, that's the situation that we're dealing with right now. Now imagine how much will twelve thousand dollars do for a local community? Not much, but it's a start, it's will be some, something that we, they can work with in developing their community. So, as you see, there, those are some areas I believe that we need to deal with, we have to deal with. Akoa, oh, ha yu base so, ashon, I mean, somehow you're saying that you give them the authority, but yet. In overall, you say that, well, I'm sorry, but we, we've got to keep, keep these, uh, uh, authorities to ourself, Napa di, the local chapter. So there, I believe there's a lot of potential that our chapter can do, and I do, I have a lot of confidence and faith in our local chapters. But we're not providing them the resource and the tools, and especially funding that they need to get these going. So, bena go ko. I mean, where's the ASC? I mean, where's the, this big community development? I mean, where's our economic development? Where's our transportation department? Where's our, uh, EPA? I mean, I'm sure there's a transfer station, jo ha ne stoa. Ela hita, aden, sato, ya, linigi, ya, de, ta, stoa, ba. Akoa, akua iki, ki la hita, di, di ki i, na, Shantai, anhlinigi. So again, like I said, I give, I give you my full support. But then again, what happens after then, knowing that the Anath chapter doesn't have sufficient funding? Implement everything that they've listed in the, the Community Land Use Plan. So, akut eh, Shantai, ni gleniki RDC members, ni gleniki, hai ta la, kua iki, eh, da, eh, ya, nitanite, heki. Pa, kua iki, na, to, deh, ba, 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 chel, na, to, deh. So, hot a xin, koto, baha si to, deh, uh, Chairman. Ado, koto, sheha, ni dini to, deh, si peni da, shosnshi ki. And then the other thing too is that, koto, uh, uh, ala ba, na hatu, ind. Then we have a lot of our authorities that also is given to the grazing rep. Land withdrawal, da, da, eh, ki, eh, de, a, kuta, stoa, chia. We're not giving them a sufficient, uh, resource for them to do a lot of these works. For eh, ajin, de, oh, ha yu, je, kodo sad, yitna, yitna, kai. Land dispute, da, da, eh, right away processed, da, da, eh, oh, you, but yet. We don't even provide them sufficient resource and even funding for them to do their work. So, akut a, nhas, ah, do, a, nash, Shantai, anhlinigi, di de, Community Land Use Plan. An yilki do, bapa yilki iki. So, bena, go, hai ta la, eh, di, koto, deka, legislation, he da, ni sozuki. What assurance can we provide to them more, uh, just, just more than, more than our vote? But what direction and give detail directive to each of the program that they would be leaning towards to ask for requests, I mean, assistance or financial assist. I mean, uh, funding requests, hai ta la, eh, a, ju, kuta, eh, ba ilna, to, deh. So, akut eh, uh, Chairman. Akoa, di ita xin, koto, baha si to, leh, to, hot a, koto. Uh, Anath chapter, mlinigi, oh, sheha, ni dini to, leh, to, I apologize for taking up the time of, uh, getting this legislation approved quickly. But again, I always want to provide some statement on some of these documents that we, that are presented to us. He da, he, he ki, hai ta, la, sato, bapa yilki, dena. The legislation passed, da, na, da, do, 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 hajon da, de, hajon, hispahos, la, do, hajod, na, bichna, hoton, na, ha, no, da. A, bichche, bichbeda, ilno, ba, be, be, nakan da, alde, la, nsi, zeh. Akoa, bena, go, eh, di legislation, ki, kuta, a, sheba, nsa, kesh, na, ha. Hai ta la, koto, la, ya, bich, bichni chet, biti, ni, la. Hai ta la, koto, resource, la, bichni chet, biti, ni, la, di de, be, 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 be la si tli, go go. Jo, hot a, eh, do, eh, isiki, beni, yet, bena, adisna, di de. So, akut ela, Chairman, di ita, koto, baha si to, deh, legislation, li ki, but I do support the legislation for passage.
Thank you very much, Honorable Kialan Begay Junior. Lago, ah, ha inchi, di de, chapters. Do, she, Anath chapter, te, ha, oyan, tki ta. Ado, any, pero legislation, be la si tli, corrective action plan, volgego. We go, she, lago, chapters at the local level, be, be, chen, da, has, eh. Corrective action plan plus sanctions that up dealia. Ado, ne, asna, of, de, nlenka, then, two years a day, leh, anyway, re, jan. Ako, di, koto, baha, honitsen, bichba, anit, lenaki. Appropriate il, and base of, be, chen, kuda, la. Ako, any, be la, da, si, tli. Uh, FY twenty-three chapters, ba. An, sago, she, eh, base, de, yo, ke, la. Ado, anana, sa, de, lo, sa, be, da, na, hadit, ahi, legislation, be di, ninigi. Be bichba, anan, lenaki, yo, ke, la. Go de, the chapters, kuda, ane, da, to, ke. Koto, eh, di, ni, he, tahto, ni, he, teho, be, la, ni, itle. Ako, di, a, di, she, eh, ha, koto, Anath chapter. Community, bichha, sa, agi. Land based use plan, hai ta, she, yen, da, aha, ki. Kua, hot, eh, o, leh, kaya. Oh, ben, da, to, land withdrawal, tahto, o, len. Eh, eh, kua, hot, eh, obeniga, da, ninigi, she, be, la, ni, itle. Ado, di, ren, he, tahto, land, land use, be di, ninido, legislation, ah, to, enda, go. That's before us, has one hundred and sixty-two pages. Ako, ha, ne, she, di de, na, aha, ki, el, ke, hana, aga, da, bika. Ako, on, sa, kesh, go, Shantai, anhlinigi, an, naltro. Ani, lago, she, he, da, il, ado, chapters, ba, la, na, il. Hajon, na, bik, iat, kiko, hajon, ah, ha, ni, go. Hajon, na, al, so, sa, be, da, na, hadit, ahi, a, sa, ta, go. Eh, hot, a, enda, il, nish. Ado, chapter officials, local level, da, ba, sa, la, na, nish. Oba il, ingo, enda, ka, ap, eh, koto, ni, he, eh. Na, hat, ane, he, eh, deh, ingo, be, bichba, anan, eh. Eh, eh, hot, a, eh, be, il, nish, na. Ado, kro, da, na, oh, na, 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 di, hot, a, da, no, sun, di, di, la, na, il, na, ha, ni, go, be, chen, kui, il, ingo, eh, da, na, na, chel, chun. Ah, who, chit, eh, ha, ninigi, eh, eh, hado, be, na, ni, tchen, da, a, hot, a. Ah, eh, se, na, da, al, te, go, bato, ta, ha, no, da, bati, il, go, da, bati, kiko, do, enda, de, kha, da, as, ni, la. Oh, ba, ma, ro, bich, eh, da, ya, da, o, leh, la. Ah, who, chit, eh, ha, ninigi, she, ati, na, nten, ta. Oh, ra, eh, ki, she, ati, be, na, ni, tchen, go, ya't eh, to. Oh, hot, a, eh, ben, nach, eh, ntsida, khes, to, di, base, oh, ya, da, halian, as, to, sa, yo, ya, da, ha, nya, chapter officials. Oh, hot, a, eh, don, he, ta, ra, ni, he, t, eh, ta, la. Corrective action plan, kui, base, oh, bichta, so, set, oh, hot, eh, go, shude, so, in, do, da, bati, ni, da. Ah, ho, ra, eh, ki, beni, na, yist, aha, kha, sa. Da, eh, de, shleni, ki, ita, ya, da, ha, nya, ya, da, ha, shet, eh, na, we, da, eh, da, da, hot, a, base, oh, na, lo, da, da, na. Ine, nach, eh, kro, ya't eh, go, da, he, ah, bichna, has, a, de. Oh, hot, eh, go, ba, ha, sun. Ako, di, eh, a, ha, ni, she, land use plan, has, da, a, do. Anath, uh, Mr. Wesley Jones, eh, sheha, Shantai. Ado, Mr. Phillips, ado, Mr. Williams, aric, our manager, na, la. So, lago, ati, in, uh, Shantai. LGA certified chapters, each agency, di, need, na, western, go, che, tadi, kha. Kujeh, ato, il, na, ta, northern, eastern, do, ato, il, na, ta, sa, eh, ba, di, ni. Ado, an, hin, chet, na, has, a, de, eh, ha, ba, yilki, go. Ah, eh, ba, yilki, di, no, hot, a, vika, nil, ingo, eh, best, eh, to. Akoa, eh, ani, di, na, a, chok, ba, di, ni, go, go. Oh, hot, a, eh, best, eh. Ako, di, eh, ani, base, oh, eh, don, ho, ke, da, oh, kro, re, just, oh, re, evaluate, eh, na, ben, ha, ta, ha, sun, sago, she, da, has, to, ki, Anath, has, a, de. Ado, Dr. Yolman, don, he, sun. Ado, aji, ben, na, nish, de, yo, seni, ki, DCD. Division of Community Development, Community Development, sa, di, choi, eh, hot, a, or, ya, na, has, a, go. Ah, de, hai, te, go, eh, ya, ha, shet, era, ha, don, ni, she, ka, nach, eh, ACS. Administrative Service Centers, be di, no, bichna, has, a, chia. Pero, she, a, chis, go, ba, da, ta, a, to, hai, ta, eh, ya, na, nish, nideh, to, hado, to. Uh, Dr. Yolman, I'd like to give you some time as to how you could expound on your office working with the local chapters for improvement. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Chair. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. You may proceed.
Okay, yeah, Honorable Chair Nez and Honorable Members of RDC. And to, uh, members who were on the call earlier from the Twenty-Fourth Council. The sponsor, um, delegate Nate Brown. And to the, the, uh, Land Use Committee members of Anath Yate. Uh, and to our staff who are on the line, and any colleagues on the line. Um, Chair Nez, I just want to commend, um, the chapter and, uh, Land Use Committee. For, for achieving this point or arriving to this point. Um, and for, um, members listening in. I also want to provide some information on the land use, um, process and plan, I'll be brief. But, under Title Twenty-Six Local Governance Act. But under Title Twenty-Six Local Governance Act, it's Section Two Zero Zero Four. Um, so this is zoning, community land based, um, community based land use plan and land use variations. Um, and the chapter themselves, they have to achieve or work towards their plan of operation. Um, there's requirements that they have had made to get this far. Under that Section Two Zero Zero Four, some of those requirements are to update their plan of operation and also have a new chapter resolution. They're also to develop a community education and participation plan. They're also to develop and implement community assessments. Also, part of this section is to go over the open space plan and community facilities plan and infrastructure plan. Essentially, this whole process is a tremendous amount of data gathering. And, um, not to counter the previous comments made, um. The the request for funding may be infrastructure or capital outlay related down the road, but for a land use plan is to have the community invest in its process and planning to develop the foundation for future planning or future growth. To gather demographics and data on a community takes a lot of work. And the the committee, the committee that is before you right now, Anna, they're presenting their plan and saying, we gathered this data. That data is really important because you might have communities, um, there's there's communities all over Navajo Nation. Um, one community, for example, Lechi'i. Lechi'i is updating their land use plan because they have a, um, a quarter inch, a waterline pipe that goes through their community, but they want to upgrade that to either three-quarter inch because of the population growth. So this is about planning. It's not necessarily about project infrastructure or funding projects. I want to speak to what was mentioned earlier, like we're giving false hope. This process alone has next steps that the chapter or the community, uh, land use planning committee will be following to help ensure that their plans, um, that are now in place will help support any future building. So this is about planning and data gathering. The other part of the plan of operation for Club C is, um. Um, the amount of the, uh, community education participation plan. Again, that involves getting community members to invest in understanding how their community is going to grow. So if you have a voter population of, say, two thousand, this morning I was at another chapter this morning, Church Rock Chapter, and they were having their land use planning. They have a voter registration of roughly two thousand. So they want to involve a sufficient sampling of voter, registered voters to be involved in this process. So maybe thirty-three percent is usually, or statistically, a good sample size to achieve. What sample size means is that if you were to ask the same people, the same questions, you would get statistically the same response. That's why these samplings or these education outreaches are really important. So that that again is not necessarily infrastructure related. Infrastructure project planning in the future is only one slice of putting together a certified, um, land use planning. So I'll I'll keep going on. So you have components of the community education and participation plan, which involves the community assessment and demographics. And then you have the mission and the goal, the priority of the of the community. I mean, if if that doesn't say community development, I mean, that there alone is probably a big piece of the heart of the community. Is making sure that, um, the certified land use plan, um, speaks to the future of its community and the goals and mission of this of this plan. Um, so the other part again is the education outreach and then and then the task of moving forward. The community education participation plan, that part involves focus groups, it involves, uh, workshops, it involves PSA to the community. If you're a community member and you are involved in some of these, that shows that you're investing in the future growth of your community. And that that really there is like the heart and soul of community development. It's not just putting money to projects. It it's not. It's about getting our people to invest in growing our community. The community assessments, the community assessments looks at our our strengths and weaknesses of our community. Involvement, are people involved? What's the strength? Some some communities have a school that serves as their hub. Some communities have just a chapter house that serves as their hub. So those are strengths and then the community assessment allows for weaknesses to be identified and how to resolve or to address some of those weaknesses in the community. The other major part of this is the data collection, the demographics. How many community members live in poverty? How many community members have running water or electricity? How many community members have adequate housing? How many community members have been properly identified through our census count? I mean, that that's essential and critical, especially when some of our projects rely on, um, data or, uh, not data, but, um, voter registration. So that that's another critical piece to what is being presented. And then lastly, I'll just kind of wrap up here. Um, of course, there's the land use plan, open space, parks, trails, um, grazing, cemetery, that those are all pieces of this. The other part is, um, the roads, the streets, the bridges, the sidewalks. Those are another piece of data that's a part of how this plan will move forward on addressing or growing in those areas. The other part that's really important is the facility plan. These are plans, they're facility plans. The other part is the schools and libraries, master site plan, um, and other public buildings that may be a part of this plan. So by having a certified land use plan, you're laying down the foundation for the community. One, to have the community members involved. Two, to set forth how that particular community or the community of Anna is going to grow moving forward. If they have a surplus in students or they have a surplus in community growth, how are they going to address that? If in the future they they want to, um, build a hospital in in five years and they need housing for hospital employees, um, this land use should be able to support some of those goals and mission of the community. That that's what's being presented here. I I don't I don't want to say that we're just pushing them out to the ocean and then it's it they're on their own to swim. That that's not what's being presented here. I think moving forward, um, the the land use committee will will begin putting in process, like a zoning process, um, withdrawal, land withdrawal process, solid waste management process, rule addressing, even ARPA projects. Those are on top. You have the foundation and then you have capital outlay and infrastructure projects on top. So Chair, I just want to kind of go over how critical and how much work it takes for a Club C committee to get this far. Um, and and even the timeline, the timeline of of the first orientation all the way to the work sessions, all the way to organizing and putting the exhibits together and putting the manual together, even having the public hearings, um, and then, of course, entering the legislative process. That that can take, um, a land use or committee, Club C, um, committee months. So for them to achieve this point and for them to present what they have, um, and every land use is different because it's uniquely tailored to the strengths and weaknesses of their own committee or their own community area. Some some communities have, um, have been hit with uranium mines or or are being impacted by uranium mines. Some committee or community, um, towns within the Navajo Nation are impacted by, um, um, low traffic, um, so that they they miss out on economic growth. I mean, so every land use plan is going to be different. Um, so Chair, I just wanted to add that I, um, we are online. We are listening. We do respond to email and text messages and phone calls, but, um, we are here, we support the chapter, um, and we 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 have other items on the agenda, but we we are online and we're appreciative of the committee that is presenting their, um, their their plan today and to the sponsor, yeah, Chair. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Yellman. Honorable Kialan Begay, your follow-up.
Uh, Chairman, yeah, nandole. Um, again, I sometimes, I guess, uh, interacting of my comment with, uh, in Navajo and in English really confuse people. But eh si gi beni vajasi gi. I have no question about the program doing their best eh de ba yeiltki and how the process goes. My main argument is is that why do we just approve documents with no funding and no, uh, specific resource to act on to get these done at the local level? That's my main argument. I'm not saying that you're not doing it, Division of Community Development. I'm not saying nobody's doing it. It's just the fact that I'm bringing this up di ah beni na ninigi di ka obel oni itle. Ah quodoh. Ako ah quahaki dene bakaati chah doh bakaan naja doh dehale tala. What mechanism of funding could be established so that any time and every time a legislation is approved for community land use plan, that there's funding, a part of funding is available right there. Baso ajahin hawalo. That's the point I'm trying to point out quahaki on this legislation and previous community community land use plan legislations. Eh quahaki astashne akor, just like any other project, okay, in there the base of all noh. Quodoh project, hadileh, doh proposal, hadileh. Hadai nahal prove yahu, but then ah denh, hadbeso nchitano tahaan na. Quot eh go go astashne, that's what I'm trying to make a statement here. Ah doh responding, ni gi eh teyeh ni clarification. I've been sending emails since Monday. I haven't even got a response as of today. So I mean, that that's another thing that I deal with for my, maybe other delegates are being responded to, but, uh, sometimes I always say that it's probably me is the reason why people aren't responding to my emails. So eh di quahaki oh clarify, nashdhalis, uh, Chairman.
Ako shila, kehaha. Yo, ahut eh la shenanant ah anh ahlinigi. Eh doh ahshinant ahgi di da quodoh legislation. So let's just move forward. Uh, Honorable colleagues, do you have any other comments or questions? I hear none. We'll go ahead and put it to a vote. Honorable Vice Chair Walker, do you vote?
I will agree.
Thank you, Vice Chair Walker. Honorable Begay.
Chairman Kialan, which is green. Thank you.
Thank you, Honorable Daniels. Honorable Freeland.
Green.
Thank you, Honorable Freeland. Honorable Stewart is excused. Honorable Daniels.
I will agree.
Thank you, Honorable Daniels. We have a vote of four in favor, zero opposed. Chair now voting motion carries for legislation zero one seventy-four dash twenty-two. Thank you, Honorable Brown. Uh, we'll go down to D legislation zero one seventy-five dash twenty-two. Honorable Daniel, so are you present on the call, sir? Nah, Honorable Daniel, so. Are you on the call? Gone twice. Gone three times. We'll go down to E. Honorable Chairman Jamie Hideo, are you on the call with us?
Honorable Chairman.
I'm here.
Okay, thank you. Hega, Hon, uh, Mr. Tai, could you read this legislation zero one seventy-six dash twenty-two into the record, sir?
Chairmembers of RDC have summary of the proposed legislation for tracking number zero one seven six dash two two, date September twenty-six, two thousand twenty-two. An act relating to the resource and development, budget, finance, and oblique committees, and to the Navajo Nation Council allocating ten million one hundred fifty-nine thousand five hundred forty-two from the Sisasun Fund to replace the Reima Navajo School Board drinking water system, approving the related expenditure plan. Purpose of this legislation, to allocate ten million one hundred fifty-nine thousand five hundred forty-two in Sisasun Fund for the new drinking water system for Reima Navajo School Board, Navajo, Reima Navajo Chapter, and to approve the related expenditure plan. Navajo Nation Council will have final authority over this legislation, which will be read into the record in its entirety. The primary sponsor of this legislation is Honorable Jamie Henyu for tracking number zero one seven six dash two two. An act relating to the resource and development, budget, finance, and oblique committees, and to the Navajo Nation Council allocating ten million one hundred fifty-nine thousand five hundred forty-two from the Sisasun Fund to replace the Reima Navajo School Board drinking water system and approving the related expenditure plan. And section one outlines the authority. And section two is the finding, which includes an exhibit A and an exhibit B, an exhibit C and an exhibit D. And section three is allocating ten million one hundred fifty-nine thousand five forty-two from the Sisasun Fund to the replace the Reima Navajo School Board drinking water system and approving the related expenditure plan, with references exhibit B, exhibit C, and exhibit D. And section four is the effective date, and section five is a savings clause. Attached, you have an exhibit A, which is the Reima Navajo School Board Inc. Pine Hill Net New Mexico Resolution Number RN SB dash EXEC dash twenty twenty-two dash zero one nine. Attached is exhibit B, which is the exhibit four resolution RN SB dash EXEC dash twenty twenty-two dash zero one nine. Attached is exhibit B, which is the Navajo Nation Fiscal Recovery Fund Request Form and Expenditure Plan for External Entities. In the amount of ten million one hundred fifty-nine thousand five forty-two. Attached is exhibit D, which is the Navajo Nation or Reima Navajo School Board Inc. Emergency Water System Improvement Preliminary Engineer Report dated September twenty-four to two thousand twenty-two. This was prepared by the Navajo, Reima Navajo School Board Inc. Then you have the first report, the Navajo Nation Legislative Branch Internet Public Review Summary for Legislation Number Zero One Seven Six Dash Two Two. Sponsor is Honorable Jamie Henyu. This legislation was posted on September twenty-six, two thousand twenty-two at eight fifty-nine PM. The five-day comment period ended October first, two thousand and twenty-two. There was no comment supporting this legislation. There was no comment opposing this legislation, and there was no comment or recommendation on this legislation. Chairmembers of RDC, that is Legislation Number Zero One Seven Six Dash Two Two read into the record. Back to you, Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Tahie. Honorable Members of RDC, let's have a motion and a second.
I'll motion Chair Freedom.
Thank you, Honorable Freeland. Sir, second. I'll second Kialan. Honorable Begay, thank you. I don't, this legislation goes on to budget and finance, and the whole council. Do you have any questions, Honorable members of RDC? Gone twice. Gone three times. We'll go ahead and put it to a vote. Honorable Vice Chair Walker, how do you vote?
Chairman, I will agree.
Thank you. Honorable Begay?
Chairman Kialan with screen. Thank you.
Thank you. Honorable Daniels? Honorable Daniels? Thank you. Honorable Freeland?
I will agree.
Thank you. Honorable Stewart is excused. We have a vote of four in favor, zero opposed. Chair now voting motion carries. Thank you, Honorable Chairman Jamie Hideo.
Yeah, Shnanda, Chairman Nez, I don't, uh, Shnanda, Resource Development Committee for this, uh, green votes and help assisting the community of Pine Hill and the Reima Navajo School Board and the students there.
Thank you. Honorable Vice Chair Walker, do you facilitate this part of the legislation? This is my legislation next.
Akushin, Heda. Thank you.
Okay, this is Vice Chair Walker, and I am taking the gavel from Chairman Nez. So, uh, Mr. Tahie, can you give us reading of the, uh, proposed legislation?
Vice Chair Walker, members of RDC, you have legislation summary sheet for tracking number zero one eight zero dash two two, date September thirteenth, two thousand twenty-two. Title of the resolution, action relating to resource and development, law and order, budget and finance, and oblique committees, and the Navajo Nation Council authorizing the Attorney General to advance fixed cost litigation, out litigation accounts funds to support the legal funds attributed to the individual federal torts claim act case filed by approximately three hundred individual tribal members for the money damage caused by the Gold King's Mine Spill waiving to NNC Section one nine six one B and one nine six four B. Purpose, this resolution is approval will authorize Attorney General to advance fixed cost litigation account funds to the attorneys representing individual Navajo farmers, federal torts claim act, litigation against the US. The advanced funds will be reimbursed if individual farmers award attorney fees in their FTC A case. Navajo Nation Council has final authority over this legislation, which will be read into the record in its entirety. The primary sponsor on this legislation is Honorable Rikinas. This is tracking number zero one eight zero dash two two. In action relating to resource and development, law and order, budget and finance, and oblique committees, and the Navajo Nation Council authorizing the Attorney General to advance fixed cost litigation account funds to support the legal fees attributed to the individual federal torts claim case filed by approximately three hundred individual tribal members for the money damage caused by the Gold King Mines Bill waiving to NNC Section one nine six one B and one nine six four B. In section one outlines the authority, and section two lists the findings. In section three is waiving to NNC Section one six nine B and one six four B as necessary for the Attorney General to advance fixed cost litigation accounts funds to E-Golf Frickhold Law Firm. In section four is authorizing the Attorney General to advance fixed cost litigation funds to the E-Golf Fugrick Law Firm. In section five is a savings clause and in section six is the effective date. You have the first report, the Navajo Nation Legislative Branch Internet Public Review Summary for Legislation Number zero one eight zero dash two two. Sponsor is Honorable Rikinas. This legislation was posted on September twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-two at six oh six PM. The five-day coming period ended October third, two thousand and twenty-two. There was no comment supporting this legislation. There was no comment opposing this legislation. There was no comments or recommendation on this legislation. Vice Chair Walker, members of RDC, that is legislation number zero one eight zero dash two two read into the record. Back to you, Vice Chair.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Tahie for reading the legislation into the record. Uh, Heda, uh, Shnanda, is there a motion for this legislation?
Chair members?
Okay, thank you, Honorable Begay. Is there a second? Mayor members, is there a second? Is there a second to this motion?
Thank you, uh, Honorable Daniels. Um, sponsor, she, Chairman Nez. This legislation moves forward to another committee. Honorable Vice Chair Walker, thank you. Um, were, are there any questions? Or do you, did you want me to just go ahead? Um, as brief as you can make it or as elaborate as you can make it. We can ask for the questions. There aren't any that we can take a vote on it? Uh, Honorable Vice Chair Walker, I can go ahead and make a brief statement on it? Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you. Thank you, Shnanda. But all the legislation, so zero one eighty dash twenty-two. What this legislation is, Kado, that's, uh, not, uh, Heda. Back in twenty fifteen, August fifth, right above Silverton, Colorado, Gold King Mine, Wulgego. The spill happened, and there was this ugly yellow water that came down from, from Silverton to Rango, Aztec Farmington, Upper Fruitland, and Anzaad, San Juan, Hogback, Shiprock, Cari, and it down to Lake Powell. So, from that, they did, the neck, it is land, their agricultural products were destroyed because the water was turned off. And a lot of people lost, um, some of them, um, they used their farms, their, um, to sell their crops. Navajo Nation, Ashahte. US EPA, yes. I don't. Edet, oh, gold companies, Ben, Iltsos. Eh, Ashahte, eh, ten million, Nadlia, Gold King, um, Kinros Gold, Wulgego. I don't, Hushten, Hoda, Deshi, G, United States Department of Justice Attorney, Yen, Lingo, the US EPA. Ah, Jax, Ah, J, eh, yeah, thirty-one million, Navajo Nation, each, and nine, Tla. Eh, di, gee, Ashahte, Shnanda, Nalsheniki, Ah, La, Ashahte. Akoh, Anana, Ashahte, eh, di, Nfida, Nadi, Tof, Anco, along San Juan River, Kedah, Tinnig, Eda, Dehla, Hidoh, Getat, Esla, Bitz, Adach, Yeah. Agatit, Ah, He, Attorneys, Dan, Ligo, One from Denver, Azar, Wulgego. I don't say, Albe, Crickit, Oh, White, No, Wulge. I don't, Anana, Saiki, Eh, Yo, Toro, Santa Fe, Do, Eh, Eh, Yeah, E-Golf Law Firm, Wulgego. Akondit, Ashahte, Iki, Eh, Houston, Henigan, Wulgego, Eh, Navajo Nation, Chuyost, Eh. Akoh, Kuchit, Naha, Gee, Ashahte, Bahadat, Alia. Akoh, Di, Sti, Ri, Ya, Sa, Hurlon, Chaj, Lan, Iche, Peso, Yeah, Dona. They're really asking, where is our money at? Akoh, Ti, Di, Iki. Eh, Gotit, Ah, He, Iki. They're still going through litig- litigation, Ashahte, Yo, Toro. Satiki, Eh, Yeah, Bitz, Ashing, Ne, Kotsa. Oh, He, Inchi, De, La, Shash, Shnala, Tsos. Hot, Endi, Farmers, Dan, Zheniki, E-Golf Law Firm, Yi, T'Ato, Hat, Ilah, Ki, Eh, Peso, Ladan, Itzen. Be, Nas, De, Nuh, But, Eh, Ni, Il, Zilto, But, Eh, Ni, Il, Nishto, Nego. Oh, Ti, Peso, Ki, Eh, Kuchit, Department of Justice, Navajo Nation, But, Huz, Ah, J. Decol, Legislation, Yet, Ahlos, Iltsos, Iki, Eh, Eh, Yeah, Di, De, At, Kho, Bakha, Ida. Authorizing the Attorney General to advance fixed cost litigation account funds, Il, Nenig. Eh, So, She, Ashahte, San, Neli, Ki, Eh, Di, Gotit, Ah, Hidso. Attorney General, Eh, Eh, La, Go, No, San, Go, Di, Singi. Um, Navajo Nation Council, She, Eh, La, Set, Ole, Dahron, Iltsos, Go, Go, Go. Akoh, Eh, Ti, Peso, Ki, This Money Will Pay The Attorneys From Santa Fe, E-Golf Law Firm, Which They Will Continue To Litigate On Behalf Of The Navajo Farmers. Akoh, Di, Nas, De, Hay, Ta, Da, Be, B'Nash, Honez, Na, Na, Goko. Di, De, Individual Federal Tort's Claims, Ah, Il, Nego. Badna, Snat, In, Hid, Nae, She, Ah, J, Bahast, Eh, At, Eh, Koho. Akoh, Ti, Peso, B'Chen, Honealiya, Goko. Ah, J, Da, Honez, Na, Go, Eh, Di, Di, Peso, This Money. If, if they win their case for the farmers, Navajo Nation will be reimbursed from E-Golf, Da, Honez, Na, Go, Eh, Ges, Kodo, Ti, Di, Ki, Et, Eh, Ti, Sa, Be, Tanah, Did. Ah, He, Hala, Yo, Toro, E-Golf Law Firm, Ki, Ni, Ka, Oh, Che, Ko, In, Nas, De, Ni, Il, Nisho. Nhid, Nae, Pa, Ked, At, La, Hid, Ki, Farmers, Di, Tof, Ta, Ta, Ho, Ho, Zao, Eh, Bitz, Adach, Hua, Apa, Joon, Ni, Ni, Ki. Eh, B'Na, Eh, Peso, B'Chen, Hudo, Nih, Il, Nego. And the Attorney General, Eh, Yeah, Oh, Hurl, Nishi, Bas, Salado, Ne, Ah, J. The Attorney General will be authorized to utilize these funds. Akoh, Eh, What, Ashinand, I don't, uh, Attorney General, I believe, is on the call, Ms. Doreen McPaul. I emailed them to be on the call, so they could hear what the questions might be. So, uh, Honorable Vice Chair Walker, you, if you would, I would appreciate it. Perhaps give some time to our Attorney General McPaul, if she is on the call.
Okay, thank you, uh, Chairman Nez for the, um, presentation on your legislation there. I don't, um, the Madam Attorney General on our call here, if so? Can allow you to speak?
Uh, Mr. Chair, uh, Yotai, Mr. Chair Walker, this is Paul Spruin. I'm obviously not Doreen McPaul, but Attorney General McPaul was unable to make this meeting. She has asked me to, uh, present any information that would be helpful to the committee on the legislation. I do think, um, Chairman Nez described it well. As to the purpose, it is to allow the continued litigation on behalf of individual farmers to receive the compensation that they deserve from the United States from the spill. Uh, and there's a particular technical issue with DOJ's Plan of Operation as described in the legislation, in that our statutory authority is to represent and fund the government itself. And because this legislation authorizes funding for individuals, it's something that was considered appropriate for this committee and ultimately the council to, um, approve to make sure that there's no question that the fixed cost litigation fund can be utilized for this purpose. And so that's generally, uh, what it's about. And I am happy to take any questions that the committee may have from the Department of Justice. Thank you.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Spruhan for getting on the call and providing some information coming from DOJ. Uh, Chairman Nez? At the, um.
Oh, uh, I believe we're done with our presentation, sir. Back to you.
Okay, thank you, Chairman. I don't, um, committee members, are there any questions? The sponsor and his, uh, agent? Honorable Daniels, you have the floor?
Um, yeah, Kado, Chairman, uh, Chairman Nez, I don't, to keep for taking this, uh, legislation for RDC today. Well, Kado, the, actually, Kado, um, Nasa, happened, um, several years back. A Gold King Mine still happened, um, North of Silverton, Colorado. It still had, uh, way, in, 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 river, uh, came down, in, in, the, 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 the. Um, you know, to that, very, uh, farmers. So, it's a, like, a thousand people, in, in, the, the. So, it's, like, a thousand, I believe, in, in, the, 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 the. Top, all, the, 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 the. And one, after, I don't, upper, food, and, uh, I don't, stand, uh, in, the, the, the.
The record in its entirety. The primary sponsor of this legislation is Audible Purnell Halona. For tracking number zero one eight one dash two two. An act relating to resource and development and budget finance committees. Approving a change to C A P dash thirty five dash eighteen. For not cheating chapter by moving the chapter cemetery expansion project on funding year one to funding year three. With no changes in the original amount of fifty thousand. And section one outlines the authority. And section two is the findings, which includes an exhibit one and an exhibit two. And section three is the approval with references exhibit two. Section four is the effective date, section five is the savings clause. Attaches exhibit one, which assists us a fun project of system find a power line and chapter. Capital projects expenditure plan, which reference much not cheating the amount of fifty thousand. Attaches exhibit two, which is the capital project management department, the system for project and. Amendment certification for C A P dash thirty five dash eighteen in the amount of fifty thousand dollars. And you have the first report, Navajo Nation Legislative Branch Internet Public Review Summary. For legislation number zero one eight one dash two two sponsors audible Purnell Halona. This legislation was posted on September twenty eighth to two thousand twenty two at six ten P M. The five day comment period ended October third, two thousand and twenty two. There was no comments. Supporting this legislation, there was no comments opposing this legislation, there was no comments or recommendation on this legislation. Here members have already see that as legislation number zero one eight one dash twenty two ran into the record. Back to you Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Tahi, Honorable Members of R D C. Let's have a motion and a second.
Here I motion.
Thank you, Vice Chair Walker. Your second. Honorable Daniels, thank you. Honorable Members of R D C, this legislation goes on to Budget and Finance Committee. Do you have any comments or questions? On this legislation for the cemetery expansion project. Or not cheating. On twice. On three times, we'll go ahead and. Vote on this legislation, Honorable Vice Chair Walker, how do you vote?
Vote green.
Thank you. Honorable Begay.
Okay, Honorable Green, thank you.
Thank you. Honorable Daniels.
Green.
Thank you. Honorable Freeland.
Green.
Thank you. Honorable Stewart is excused. We have a vote of four in favor, zero opposed, chair not voting. Motion carries on legislation zero one eighty one dash twenty two. Thank you, Honorable Purnell Halona.
Thank you, uh, R D C Committee. I appreciate your support. Have a good day. I'll, I'll be on still for a while. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next legislation, zero one eighty two dash twenty two, Honorable Carl Slater. Are you on the call, sir? On twice. On three times. Next legislation, zero one eighty three dash twenty two. This is also Honorable Carl Slater's legislation and he's not on the call. So we'll go down to J legislation zero one eighty five dash twenty two. Of which I am the sponsor, so I'm gonna have to. Have Honorable Vice Chair Walker facilitate this part of the meeting again, sir.
Okay, thank you, uh, Chairman. Um, Mr. Tahi, can you read the legislation to the record? Vice Chair, members of R D C, you have legislation summary sheet for tracking number. Zero one eight five dash two two, date September twenty ninth at two thousand and twenty two. Title of the resolution proposed standing committee resolution. An action relating to the Resource and Development Committee. Waiving Navajo Nation Road Fund Regulations, approving the Navajo Nation Division of Transportation Navajo Nation Road. Fund project budget extension in the amount of. Six million one hundred eighty nine thousand three hundred thirty five and three cents to allow. For the funds for twenty six road projects to be used beyond the date of the fiscal year in which the funds were allocated or extended. Purpose, the purpose of this legislation is to approve Navajo Nation Division of Transportation. Now a nation road fund project budget extension for twenty six road funds. Projects beyond the fiscal year in which the funds were allocated or extends extended. Resource and Development Committee has final authority over this legislation must be read into the record in its entirety. The primary sponsor of this legislation is Honorable Ricky Ness. For tracking number zero one eight five dash two two. An action relating to Resource and Development Committee, waiving the Navajo Nation Road Fund Regulations. Approving the Navajo Nation Division of Transportation, Navajo Nation Road Fund. Project budget extension in the amount of six million one hundred eighty nine thousand three hundred thirty five and three cents. To allow for the funds for twenty six road projects to be used beyond the date of the fiscal years in which the funds were allocated or extended. Being active, section one authority, the Resource and Development Committee is the Oversight Committee for the Navajo Nation Division of Transportation. And is the Oversight Committee for the Navajo Nation Road Funds Regulations. Two in N C section five O two C one. See also R D C. J N dash thirty six dash fourteen. Section two is defining the Navajo Nation Road Funds Regulations. Was approved by resolution R D C J N dash thirty six dash fourteen. And regulated the Navajo Nation Road Funds in which funded by. The fuel excise tax, these regulations state at section. Seven, use of unexpected funds. Any unexpected funds within a fiscal year shall be reverted back to the fund balance and. Eligible for real allocation for the following fiscal year. Specific to section five eligible road maintenance and road improvement activities. B. In a memorandum from the Navajo Division of Transportation Roads Department Manager dated May twenty six, two thousand twenty two attached to exhibit one. The Navajo Nation Division of Transportation requests project budget extensions for twenty six road. Fun projects. Reason for this extension are Navajo Nation employees placed on administrative leave due to COVID pandemic. This caused projects to halt or slow progress through the design procurement process at N dot. B, no personnel. To prepare C five two construction contract prior to the beginning of the one sixty three. Four review process, see delays or slow progress in other divisions and or departments to sign off on the one sixty four B contracts. Two, environmental and archaeological personal turnover at E P A Fish and Wildlife. Historic Preservation Department and at N dot, this has caused delays in construction permits acquisitions, three inflation. Has meant changes to the scope of work, see. The requested twenty six road funded. Project extensions are from various businesses units as listed in exhibit two and were allocated in fiscal year twenty. Two thousand six, two thousand fourteen, two thousand fifteen, two thousand sixteen and two thousand eighteen. D, the Resource and Development Committee. And its predecessors, the Transportation Community Development Committee previously approved. T C D C J N dash two six dash zero six, R D C S dash fifty eight dash fourteen, R D C S dash sixty one dash fourteen. R D C. D dash ninety dash fifteen, R D C A P dash twenty two sixteen, R D C M Y dash forty six eighteen. Which were road funded allocation varies Navajo Nation Road funded. Road fund projects, these resolutions. Which select exhibits omitted or attached as exhibit three, four, five, six. Seven and. Eight respectively. E, the Resource and Development Committee approve R D C M Y dash fifty two dash seventeen, which granted a project extension date of. September thirtieth at twenty eighteen to various Navajo Nation Road Fund the project. Originating in fiscal year. Two thousand three, two thousand five, two thousand six, two thousand seven. Two thousand fourteen, two thousand fifteen, resolution R D C M Y dash fifty two dash seventeen. Which select exhibits permitted is attached as exhibit nine. F, the Resource and Development Committee approve R D C O dash eighty three dash eighteen, which granted a. Project extension date of September thirtieth, twenty twenty two to various Navajo Nation Road Fund Projects. Originating in fiscal year two thousand six, two thousand seven, two thousand fourteen, two thousand fifteen, two thousand sixteen. This resolution with selected exhibits omitted is attached as exhibit ten. The Resource and Development Committee approve R D J A dash zero two dash twenty one, which granted a project extension date of September. Thirtieth to twenty twenty two to various Navajo Nation Road funded. Projects are originating in fiscal year twenty. Two thousand six to twenty fourteen, twenty fifteen and twenty sixteen, this resolution with selected. Exhibit omitted as attached to exhibit eleven. The F M I S Job Status Inquiry Reports for the twenty six road. Fund project business unit accounts as of April thirtieth, twenty twenty two are attached as exhibit twelve. The Navajo Nation Project Budget Schedule for the twenty six road. Fun project business unit accounts are attached as exhibit thirteen. The executive branch has completed its executive review process document number one eight seven two four. The Office of Management and Budget, Office of Control and Department of Justice have indicated the documentations as significant. This approvals are approved in exhibit fourteen. Section three waiving Navajo Nation Road Fund Regulations. R D C J N dash thirty six dash fourteen. By preventing the unexpected funds, unexpended funds are from the river. From reverting to the Navajo Nation Road Fund Balance. The Resource and Development Committee waves the Navajo Nation Road Fund Regulations, R D C J N dash thirty six dash fourteen. Allowing unexpected funds within the fiscal year from reverting back to Navajo Nation Roads Fund Balance. Section four, approving for extension of Navajo Nation Road Fund Projects to September thirtieth, twenty sixteen. The Navajo Nation hereby extends the project completion date to September thirtieth to twenty twenty six. For the following Navajo Nation Road Fund Projects, one Black Mesa Route. Bus Route Drainage. C zero. One three zero. T C D J N dash two five dash zero six, R D C J. A zero two one two two, low water crossing. C zero one five zero seven, R D C S dash five eight dash one four, R D C J A dash zero two. Dash two one, three forty finance route in one one two. C zero one five one four, R D C. S dash six one dash fourteen, Delcon four, Delcon Route are in. Nine eight three seven. C zero one five one nine, R D C. S dash six one dash one four. Five Shiprock Route in five four six. C. Zero one five two one, R D C S. Dash six one dash fourteen, Red Valley Route, six Red Valley Route. In five zero two zero, C zero one five two four, R D C S dash six one fourteen, seven Kienta. In one zero six M, in one five. Nine one, C zero one five three zero, R D C. S dash six one dash one four eight, Shanto in one twenty eight. C zero one five three one, R D C J N six one one four. Nine Chinley Agency Road Improvement. C zero one five four seven, R D C S. Dash six one one four ten in dot road project preliminary. C zero one five six one, R D C D dash. Nine zero one five eleven, White Horse Lake Maintenance Yard, C zero one five six seven, R D. C D. Dash ninety dash fifteen. Pinyon in eighty thirty gravel, C zero one five seven six, R D C A P dash two two one six. Newcom in five zero zero seven. Captain Tom Walsh. C zero one six four four, R D C D. Four seven dash eighteen and fourteen, Greasewood in nine zero zero three, British Design. C zero one six four six, R D C dash four seven dash. Eighteen. Fifteen is Sahili Wheatfields in eight zero seven seven bus route is C zero one six four seven, R D C D. Dash four seven one eight, Tisnes Bus. In. Five zero six zero. C zero one six four eight, R D C D dash four seven dash eighteen seventeen Rock Point zero one zero. Eight zero zero nine, C zero one six four nine, R D C D four seven one eight, eighteen. Kill the. She. C zero one six five zero, R D C D dash four seven dash eighteen nineteen Kienta. In six four eight six, it sees zero one six five one, R D C D dash forty seven eighteen twenty loop. In forty six nine one zero, C zero one six five two, R D C D dash four seven eighteen. Twenty one. Whopper Will in six. Seven three, C zero one six five three, R D C D dash four seven one eight. Twenty two, Sawmill White Clay. C zero one six five five, R D C D dash four seven dash eighteen twenty three, Red Lake. In one one two, C zero one six five six, R D C D dash four seven dash eighteen. Twenty four. And attached training post in. Five thousand, C zero. One one six zero, R D C D dash four seven dash eighteen. Twenty five gravel pit development equipment. C zero one six 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 five, R D C D dash four seven dash eighteen to twenty six airport extension grants. Cash match, that C zero one six six seven, R D C D dash four seven dash eighteen. Attached to exhibit one, the Division of Transportation Memorandum dated May twenty six, two thousand and twenty two. To the one sixty four reviewers. Subject. Section one sixty four review number. Zero one eight seven two four, proposed resolution of the R D C to extend in in road. Fun project accounts to September thirtieth at twenty twenty six, attached twenty four. Attached to exhibit two, which is the section one sixty four review form number zero one eight seven two four. Attaches exhibit three, the Transportation Community Development of the Navajo Nation Council, the twentieth. Navajo Nation Council fourth year of two thousand and six resolution, T C D C J N dash two five. Dash is zero six, attaches exhibit four, resolution of the Resource and Development Committee of the twenty second Navajo Nation Council, fourth year. Two thousand and four, R D C J S. Dash five eight dash fourteen. Attaches exhibit five, resolution on the Resource and Development Committee of the twenty second. Navajo Nation Council fourth year, resolution number R D C S dash sixty one dash fourteen. Attached to exhibit six, which is a resolution of the Resource and Development Committee of the twenty third Navajo Nation Council, first year, two thousand and five. R D C D dash ninety dash fifteen. Attached to exhibit seven. Resolution of the Resource and Development Committee in the twenty third Navajo Nation Council, second year of twenty sixteen. Resolution number R D C. A P dash twenty two dash sixteen, attached as exhibit eight. Resolution of the Resource and Development Committee, twenty third Navajo Nation Council, fourth year of twenty eighteen. Resolution number R D C M Y dash forty seven to eighteen. Attaches exhibit nine, resolution of the Resource and Development Committee, twenty third Navajo Nation Council, third year of twenty seventeen. Resolution number R D C M Y dash fifty two dash seventeen. Attaches exhibit ten, resolution of the Resource and Development Committee, twenty third Navajo Nation Council, fourth year of twenty eighteen. R D C O dash eighty three dash eighteen. Attaches exhibit eleven, resolution of the Resource and Development Committee, twenty fourth Navajo Nation Council, third year of twenty twenty one. R D C J A dash zero two dash twenty one. Attaches exhibit twelve, which is the Navajo Nation, um, Black Mesa Bus Route Drainage. With all the, the, the projects listed, attaches exhibit thirteen, which is a Navajo Nation Project Budget Schedule. Attaches exhibit fourteen, which is a. Document review, the section one sixty four review form for zero one. Eight seven two four, this was issued on May twenty third, twenty twenty two. Then finally you have the first report Navajo Nation Legislative Branch Internet Public Review Summary. For legislation number zero one eight five dash two two sponsors honorable Ricky Ness. This legislation was posted on September twenty ninth, two thousand twenty two at five eight. Five fifteen P M, the five day comment period ended October fourth at two thousand twenty two, there was no comments. Supporting this legislation, there was no comments opposing this legislation, there was no comments or recommendation on this legislation. Vice Chair Walker, member of R D C, that is legislation number zero one eight five dash two two ran into the record. Back to you, Vice Chair Walker.
Thank you, um. It's time for reading the document into the record for our, uh, consideration here. Appreciate it. Um, none, uh, committee members. So, establish a motion. Is there a motion?
Honorable Daniels, thank you. Offering that motion. Uh, is there a second?
Is there a second?
Mister Vice Chair, this is Mariana Khan.
Um, okay. Let's see, are you? Are you gonna speak to the, uh, quorum or? Anything like that?
I just wanted to remind the committee that the, um. That any member of the committee may, may provide the second.
Okay, thank you, appreciate it. So, is there a second? Any members?
Honorable Vice Chair Walker.
Yes.
Delegate Rick Ness seconds, if it's okay.
Okay, that, that is okay to do, Chairman. We have a motion offered by, uh, Honorable Herman Daniels. And a second by, uh, Chairman Rick Ness. But they lack. So, question, um. Are there any questions? Not only. Is there any comments? Uh, Mr. Tahi.
Vice Chair Walker, yes.
Uh, can you see if there, um, our committee members are all on the call here?
Vice Chair Walker, you have yourself, you have Delegate Rick Ness, you have Delegate Herman Daniels and Delegate Mark Freeland on the call.
Okay, thank you for that. Um, so, uh, questions and comments, committee members. At then she, eh, we can. Certainly, uh, call for the question here. Um, Honorable Key Allen Begay, he, uh, texted his vote, which is green. Thank you, thank you, Honorable Begay. Uh, Honorable Herman Daniels, how do you vote?
I vote green.
Thank you for that. Honorable Mark Freeland, how do you vote? Honorable Mark Freeland, how do you vote?
Okay, the Freeland votes green.
Okay, thank you for that vote. Well, Freeland should take. Uh, Honorable Wilson Stewart is excused from today's meeting. Uh, Chairman Ness, how do you vote?
Delegate Rick Ness votes green.
Okay, thank you for that. Uh, we have a vote of four in favor, opposed, there are none. And then Vice Chair not voting here. But they lack. Motion carries, thank you, everyone. I just think that, uh, but you've been not or let either. Um, presiding over today's meeting, Honorable Chairman Ness. You had the gamble, sir.
Yeah, thank you very much, Honorable Vice Chair Walker, for facilitating them this part of the meeting. We'll go down to K legislation zero one fifty seven dash twenty two. Honorable Vice Chair. Raymond Smith Junior, are you on the call, sir? Honorable Vice Chair Smith. On twice.
Chairman Ness.
Honorable. Yes.
Uh, I text Delegate Raymond Smith, let him know both his legislation are up next, I haven't received the response yet. But I just wanna inform you, members already see that I didn't inform him.
Okay, when did you inform him?
The chair members of R D C, I texted him about five minutes ago, letting him know his legislations is, are up.
Okay. Honorable Vice Chair Smith, three times. And, uh. Earlier. Honorable Daniels asked to suspend the floor rules because Honorable. Smith requested to be. Put last. And now he's not responding. Perhaps this, these two legislations will move forward to the next. Resources and Development Committee meetings. So we did ask him. Three times, Mr. Tahi also texted him. We're at number eight, close of meeting. Mr. Tahi, any other announcements?
My Chairman Ness. Chairman Ness at Halona?
Uh, yes.
My Chairman Ness, uh, on that one fifty seven, I'm a co-sponsor on that, I don't know if, uh, uh, since Mr., uh. Smith is not on, will you be able to, uh? Call that legislation to order?
Um, Honorable Halona. There's two legislations, one zero one seventy two dash twenty two. And zero one fifty seven dash twenty two. But on the agenda, we have Honorable Stewart as the co-sponsor and your name is not on here, sir.
Uh, yeah, I noticed that last round two, uh, uh, my name is on the legislation though, if you look at the, uh, um. For front page on where the signing sheet is, I, I did sign that signing sheet, uh, co-sponsor.
Should say Chairman, uh, this is Vice Chair Smith, I'm on line right now.
Yes. Okay, uh, thank you, Honorable Vice Chair Smith for getting on the call where. We were getting ready to find out what happened, but I'm glad you're on the call with us. We're on K legislation zero one fifty seven dash twenty two, Mr. Tahi, could you read this into the record, sir?
The chair members of R D C, you have legislation summary sheet for tracking number zero one five seven dash two two. They, September fourteenth to two thousand twenty two, title of the resolution in action relating to law and order. Health, Education, Human Services, Resource and Development. And Budget Finance and Nobility Committees and Navajo Nation Council, amending C A P dash thirty five dash eighteen. System Fund Power Line and Capital Projects Expenditure Plan. To extend projects completion deadline for an additional twenty four months. Purpose, this resolution, if approved, will extend C A P dash thirty five dash eighteen. Project completion deadlines to. Seventy two months. Chair members of R D C Navajo Nation Council has final authority over this legis- Chair members of R D C, Navajo Nation Council has final authority over this legislation, which will be read into the record in its entirety. The primary sponsor for this legislation is Honorable Raymond Smith Junior, for tracking number Zero One Five Seven Dash Two Two, in action relating to the Law and Order, Health, Education, Human Services, Resource and Development, Budget and Finance, and Nobuket Committees, and Navajo Nation Council, amending C A P dash thirty-five dash eighteen, Sisasun Fund Power Line and Chapter Project Expenditure Plan, to extend project completion deadlines for an additional twenty-four months. In Section One, it outlines the authority. In Section Two, the findings, which includes an Exhibit A. In Section Three is amending C A P dash thirty-five dash eighteen, as amended by C J A dash zero three dash twenty-one. In Section Four is effective date, in Section Five is the directives. Then you have the first report, the Navajo Nation Legislative Branch Internet Public Review Summary for Legislation Number Zero One Five Seven Dash Two Two, sponsors Honorable Raymond Smith Junior. This legislation was posted on September fifteenth, two thousand twenty-two at nine forty A M. The five-day comment period ended September twentieth, two thousand twenty-two. There was no comments supporting this legislation, there was no comments opposing this legislation, there was no comments or recommendation on this legislation. Attached also is the Law and Order, the Twenty-Fourth Navajo Nation Council Fourth Year Committee Report. The committee reports a due pass with no amendments, with a vote of two in favors or opposed and three not voting. Then you have the Health, Education, Human Services Committee, the Twenty-Fourth Navajo Council, Council, Fourth Year, two thousand twenty-two Committee Report. The Health, Education, Human Services Committee Reports, um, passed with no amendments, but notification of a typographical error. The typographical error is included on page three of five D. It says, all caps, twenty-five dash eighteen to all caps, thirty-five dash eighteen. This legislation passed of four favors or opposed and there are standings. Chair members of R D C, that is Legislation Number Zero One Five Seven Dash Two Two read into the record. Back to you, Chairman.
Thank you, Mister Tahie, for reading this legislation and for the record. Honorable Members of R D C, let's have a motion and a second.
Chairman, I motion.
Thank you, Honorable Vice Chair Walker. Is there a second? Honorable Daniels, thank you very much. Honorable Members of R D C, this legislation goes on to Law and Order, Health, Education, Resources, Development, Budget and Finance Committee, Navajiaetike Committee, and the full Navajo Nation Council. Do you have any comments or questions on this legislation? On twice. Going three times, we'll put this legislation to a vote. Honorable Vice Chair Walker, how do you vote?
Chairman, I vote green.
Thank you, sir. Honorable Begay votes green, according to his text message. Honorable Daniels?
Green.
Thank you. Honorable Freeland?
Vote green.
We have a vote of four in favor, zero opposed, chair not voting. Motion carries. Thank you, Honorable Vice Chair Smith. We'll go to, we'll go back to your other legislation, Zero One Seventy-two Dash Twenty-Two. Um, Mister Tahie, could you read this into the record, sir?
Chair members of R D C, you have Legislation Summary Sheet for Tracking Number Zero One Seven Two Dash Two Two. Date, September twenty-first, two thousand twenty-two, titled the Resolution and Act Relating to the Resource and Development Committee and the Budget and Finance Committee, accepting the Auditor General's audit of the Nahatzel Commission Governance and approving the chapter's proposed corrective action plan. Purpose, this resolution of approval will accept the audit and corrective action plan for the Nahatzel Commission Governance. Budget and Finance has final authority over this legislation, which will be read into the record in its entirety. The primary sponsor of this legislation is Honorable Raymond Smith Junior, for tracking number Zero One Seven Seven Two Dash Two Two, in act relating to the Resource and Development Committee and the Budget and Finance Committee, accepting the Auditor General's audit of the Nahatzel Commission Governance and approving the chapter's proposed corrective action plan. In Section One outlines the authority. In Section Two, the findings, which includes an Exhibit A, Exhibit B, Exhibit C, and Exhibit D. In Section Three is accepting the Auditor General's audit of the Nahatzel Commission Governance and approving the chapter's proposed corrective action plans with references Exhibit A and Exhibit C. In Section Four is the directives. And Section Five is the effective date, and Section Six is the savings clause. Attaches is Exhibit A, which is the, the office of the Auditor General, the Navajo Nation, um, Internet Internal Audit of the Nahatzel Commission Governance, the report number twenty dash zero four, date December twenty nineteen. Attaches Exhibit B, which is a letter dated to Navajo Nation Auditor General, date December thirtieth of twenty nineteen, regarding a request letter to the audit findings by Newberry and Associates L T P. Attaches Exhibit C, which is the Nahatzel Commission Governance Corrective Action Plan Audit Report Number Two Zero Dash Zero Four. Attaches Exhibit D, which is the Resolution of Nahatzel Commission Governance in D C G dash twenty twenty-two dash zero four dash nineteen. Then you have the first report, Internet Public Review Summary for Legislation Number Zero One Seven Two Dash Two Two, sponsors Honorable Raymond Smith Junior. This legislation was posted on September twenty-third, two thousand twenty-two. The five-day comment period ended September twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-two. There was no comment supporting this legislation, there was no comment opposing this legislation, there was no comments or recommendation on this legislation. Chair members of R D C, that is Legislation Number Zero One Seven Two Two read into the record. Back to you, Chairman.
Thank you, Mister Tahie. Honorable Members of R D C, let's have a motion and a second.
Chairman, I motion.
Thank you, Honorable Vice Chair Walker. Second by?
End.
Honorable Daniels, thank you. We'll give some time over to the Auditor General's office. Ms. Tom, are you still on the call to present on this Nahatzel Corrective Action Plan?
Um, good afternoon, committee members. Um, my name is Karen Briscoe with the Office of the Auditor General.
Ms. Briscoe, you may present. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, committee members, I'm here to present the internal audit report of the Nahatzel Com- Commission Governance. Uh, Commission Governance is a certified chapter. This report was issued back in, um, December of twenty nineteen. Did have some, some delays in getting this report to committee for presentation. Right after the report was, um, issued, COVID and the whole shutdown happened, and then the chapter's staff left, and the Commission Governance was without staff for, for a long time. So, the manager and administrative assistant that are mentioned in this report are no longer with Commission Governance. Currently, they do have new staff, so I believe the, uh, new commission manager is, is on the phone call too. And some of the commissioners are also new since the issuance of this report, and I believe there are four of, of the five commissioners who are new. Um, so we were able to work with the commissioners when it came to getting a corrective action. This audit report was outsourced and completed by Newberry and Associates. The, uh, review period was a twelve-month period ending June of twenty nineteen, and there were nine findings reported. I'll go over each finding. In finding one, states personnel action forms were not provided for some of the payroll samples selected, and some of the personnel action forms provided were incomplete and lacked necessary signatures. Auditors reviewed nineteen personnel files, and they noted issues including missing personnel action forms, incomplete personnel action forms, or missing employee signatures, or commission, commissioner signatures on the, the action forms. On seven of the personnel action forms, um, dates such as the effective dates, concurrent dates, those were all dated after the, um, auditors reviewed the files. Um, in finding two, hourly rates on employee paychecks varied from rates stated on the personnel action forms and the personnel files. Auditors reviewed thirty-seven payroll disbursements, and they noted issues including payroll checks were calculated using pay rates different from the approved personnel action form pay rates, including two employees were overpaid by an, uh, a dollar an hour for three pay periods, another employee overpaid by four dollars an hour, and six fifty an hour for overtime in one pay period. Another employee was underpaid by a dollar an hour in one pay period. Finding three, overtime being paid to an exempt employee, missioner, commission manager, this would be the manager at the time of the review period, with paid eleven checks, overtime pay totaling six thousand and forty-three dollars. Manager is an exempt employee and not eligible for overtime according to the policies. Finding four, stipend checks are issued without claim forms. The auditors reviewed twenty-three stipend disbursements, and sixteen were not supported by claim forms totaling forty-six hundred dollars. Finding five, advances were allowed for non-family emergencies. Policies allow for payroll advances only for family emergencies. However, four employees and three commissioners received advances for non-family emergencies. Advances were allowed for personal travel, vehicle repairs, vehicle payments, vehicle purchase. Um, ineligible advances paid total to about thirteen thousand nine hundred eighteen. Finding six, advances are not being repaid in a timely manner. Policies require advances to be repaid the following pay period, and only allows for one outstanding pay advance at a time. However, there was a commissioner who received two advances totaling six thousand, and as of the end of the review period, had not repaid it. Advance should not have been authorized, as they already had an outstanding advance in place. And the commission manager also received several advances that had not been repaid at, at the end of the review period, and had owed eleven thousand four hundred and twenty-eight, twenty-eight dollars. And again, was allowed to receive advances when there was already an outstanding advance in place. But overall, for the review period, there was a total of thirty-three thousand three hundred and eleven that was still owed to the commission governance by employees and commissioners for advances. And in finding, seven, disbursements approved for payroll advances were incorrectly coded to expense accounts, and disbursements approved for supplies were incorrectly coded to professional and seminar fees. Seven, payroll advances to employees totaling twenty-two thousand dollars, three hundred and seventy-five. Um, but these disbursements were not coded as payroll advance receivables in the accounting system. They were coded as expenses such as travel, training, supplies. As a receivable in the financial statement, would show that the advance has to be repaid by after employee, but putting it as an expense, go undetected that employees have not repaid their advances. Also, by miscoding payroll advances as an expense that would result in underreporting payroll taxes to I R S and would result in not being reported on the employee's W two form. And there were two additional checks totaling five thousand four hundred and fifty-five. Um, those were approved to purchase furniture, supplies, and meeting expenses, but were made payable to the commission manager instead of directly to the vendor. And then, these were also miscoded as professional fees and seminar fees. Finding eight, financial assistance disbursements were paid to individual employees, were not directly paid to vendors, and were more than the limit of two hundred and fifty each. Three disbursements were approved for financial assistance, and were for more than two, the hundred and fifty-dollar policy limit. Two of these checks were payable to employees rather than the vendor. One employee received a total of nine thousand one hundred and twenty made payable to the employee in five, um, separate checks for financial assistance. Each were more for more than two hundred and fifty dollars. Finding nine, expenditures were made without proper documentation to justify expenses. The auditors reviewed eighty-seven disbursements, and twelve of those did not have any support documentation. Of these twelve, five were payable to the chapter manager totaling over ten thousand dollars. One was to an employee totaling twenty-eight hundred, another to another employee totaling five thousand. Two of those totaling one thousand seven hundred eighty-one dollars to commissioners. And then the remaining three were totaling two hundred and sixty dollars were to other individuals. So those are all of the, uh, findings reported, um, in the audit report. This, um, report was referred over to the Ethics and Rules Office. Um, and since there was no staff, we did work with the commissioners to, um, get the corrective action plan developed, and it was approved through, uh, resolution. Before we're here asking the committee for approval of the audit report and corrective action plan. Thank you, that'll be the end of my report.
Thank you very much, Ms. Briscoe, for your report. Now, Honorable Vice Chair Smith, you have twenty minutes, and please identify your agents from Nahatzel.
Yeah, Chairman, and R D C members of the Navajo Nation Council, and those that are listening, regards to this legislation. Uh, those findings, yes, were, uh, provided. Uh, my agents should be on board. Nahatzel Commissioners, think, uh, Daryl Ahosteen is on board. You may be able to, uh, assist in answering some of the questions that may be posed on the corrective action plan. Uh, as you well know, that the, uh, findings, one through nine, the audit was done, and audits completed, legislation dropped in regards to the, uh, findings that, uh, took place, and there is a corrective action plan that, uh, was, uh, drafted and provided under these findings, and, um, it's under Exhibit, uh, B, the, uh, agents that, uh, the, uh, commissioners at the time listed on Exhibit B. There is that, uh, The agents of the Commissioners at the time listed on Exhibit B, there is that signatures of the past Commissioners, and this was dated back in December 30th of 2019. In the response letter in audit finding by Newberry and Associates, Exhibit B, the Commissioners met with them, and Auditor General Karen Briscoe met with them basically on this and findings that were audited. We will see on Exhibit B, there is a corrective action, and there was, there is also a resolution, That was passed by the Nahat Attila Commission Governance here back in December 19, 2019, on the 30th day, with the favor of four, zero opposed, one abstained, signed by the then Commissioner President of Nahat Attila Governance. Under Item C, the Nahat Attila Governance Corrective Action Plan, it's Audit Number 20-04, and it was completed by the date of December 31st, 2022. It should be completed. There's the issuance, corrective action, responsible parties, and it should be completed on a certain timeframe here. We haven't got into December 31st, 2022, so hopefully that these will be completed. On finding one, lists all the findings. Finding one, finding two, and finding three has corrective action in there. And we're asking that RDC reviews the findings, and if there's any certain questions, I can turn the call over to the agent. We have, my agent is Darrell Austin, who is now the current Commissioner President of Nahat Attila. The chapter is certified, and these findings are going to be done through the audit report, and the corrective action is in front of us. The Commissioner under Exhibit D has, Nahat Attila recommends and approves the revised correction action plan. So, there is a revised one, and that's through Exhibit D, which is NDCG-2022-04-019. And that was presented, and it was passed during March 22 of this year, and it was based off of the audit number that's reflecting on this legislation here. That was signed by the current Commissioner President on the 8th day of April, 2022, with the favor of two in favor, and none opposed, and one abstained, this resolution. So, that's where we're at on this corrective action plan. I'll give the call over to Darrell Austin. I know that he texted me earlier. Go ahead, Mr. Austin, are you there?
Yeah, the RDC committee members and our community staff, our sponsor, Delegate Raymond Smith, thank you. The audit, I keep by Newberry and Associates back in 2019. Although, the first corrective action plan, the prior administration and prior elected officials. And then, we attached a resolution, NDCG-2019-12-159. We thought President Wayne Lynch, sorry. I made a motion on it, Darrell saw it. Secondly, when it went to a vote, it was 401. At the same time, we did a response letter to the audit, to the Auditor General. All the Commissioners signed it, and we thought Commission Manager, Yoness, yes, we signed it, and we sent that off to the Auditor General on our response to the audit. And then, Kobe, I don't know how that, the Auditor General, there's a lot of information that really should not be in the corrective action plan because it's kind of redundant. So, Exhibit C, A.S.C., Derek Echohawk, 45th Agency, when he came down, and we sat down with him, and we did, we revised it, corrective action plan. Oh, you completed date, RDC and different entities. All you need on there is completed by December 31st, 2022. Then, we attached a resolution, NDCG-2022-04-019. A just sign, start in Levant Society Motion, and Loretta by is second. So, that vote was 201. A lot, a lot of these findings, we've been correcting them all along. Although, with the hiring of a Commission Manager for a whole year, for a whole year, we went without a Commission Manager. So, we're kind of basically at a standstill administration-wise. We call Patricia Bitzui, hire as Commission Manager. A lot of the policies and a lot, a lot of things have changed. A lot of things have been approved, and. So, a lot of these corrective actions, it's already instituted. It's already in the works. And corrective action, corrective action from, from RDC, the recommendation, we're in favor of that, like the six months. To me, we're ready in six minutes to go move on again, but in the paper is six months, Auditor General can bring back another auditor and go back over, over the findings. To me. Administrative Assistant higher, so we do have our two, two administrative employees that are taking care of the whole chapter itself. So, to me, I think it's, I think we're good to go with getting out of this audit. Although, the only thing is, ITG New Mexico, they're not putting on any more training. So, we're looking for training for our administrative assistant and our manager. And then, Friday. Maybe we overlooked it, but I've never, I've never seen, I've been here since 2013, and I've never seen a resolution to take prior check signers off the check signing list at Wells Fargo. And our manager is going to take, present a resolution to us to take off names that are no longer needed on our signature card. So, I think that's about the gist of my, my presentation. Thank you, Chair.
Honorable Vice Chair Smith, are you done with your presentation?
Thank you, Chair, RDC members of the Navination, RDC. Go ahead, we're ready for any questions on behalf of this legislation. And thank you, Commissioner President Darrell Austin.
Thank you, Honorable Vice Chair Smith, and Mr. Haski. Corrective Action Plan for Nahat Attila Commission Governance. Honorable members of RDC, do you have any comments or questions? Going twice? Going three times. Honorable Vice Chair Walker, how do you vote?
Chairman?
Yes.
I believe we've lost quorum. You have yourself, Delegate Daniels, and Delegate Freeland on the call. I'm looking to see if Delegate Kialan McGay or Delegate Daniels is back on. Or Delegate Thomas Walker at the moment.
I'm here, I'm here, Chairman, Freeland.
Honorable Freeland's here. Honorable Daniels is on the call. Honorable Vice Chair Walker. Honorable Gay.
Chairman, Delegate Walker, do you have back on the call? We've reestablished quorum.
Okay, thank you. Honorable Vice Chair Walker, are you on the call?
Yes, yes, I am.
Okay, thank you. We're voting on Legislation 0172-22, Nahat Attila Commission Governance Corrective Action Plan. How do you vote, sir?
Chairman, I vote green. Thank you.
Thank you. Honorable Daniels?
Green.
Thank you, Honorable Daniels. Honorable Freeland?
I vote green.
Thank you. Honorable Stewart is excused. Honorable Gay?
We have a vote of three in favor, zero opposed, Chair not voting. I just saw Honorable Kialan McGay text in his vote as green. We have a vote of four in favor, zero opposed, and Chair not voting. Motion carries for Legislation 0172-22. Honorable Vice Chair Smith, thank you very much.
I just want to say too, on the prior legislation, I heard Honorable Halona saying that he is his co-sponsor. Yes, his name's on that, and I don't know why it wasn't reflecting back on the, as a co-sponsor. So, if that can be corrected, I appreciate, I appreciate him stepping up the plate while I was at another meeting, and I'm in an important meeting. So, it wasn't basically for me being absent without cause. I just wanted to put that on record, and I want to appreciate RDC and the handout for all the things that RDC is doing for Navination. Thank you.
Thank you, Honorable Vice Chair Smith, for that. We're done with new business. We're at the close of our meeting, number eight. Any announcements, Mr. Tahi?
Chairman, members of RDC, I have no new announcements. Back to you, Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Tahi. Honorable members of RDC, I would really like your attendance at East Nazbus Chapter tomorrow morning at 9:00. We have some important issues to discuss over there at the border, so we would appreciate you all making time to come up to East Nazbus. We're on adjournment. Is there a motion and a second? Motion to adjourn? Was that you, Honorable Daniels?
Yes, it's, good.
Okay, thank you, Honorable Daniels. Is there a second?
Chairman, I second.
Thank you, Honorable Vice Chair Walker. Thank you for your participation in today's RDC meeting. Thank you, everybody that has been on the call with us throughout the day. You all be safe out there, and may God bless each and every one of you. We are officially adjourned now at 2:00 PM.
Chairman!
Honorable Vice Chair Walker, how do you vote?
Court note.
Chairman, I vote green.
Honorable Gay? Honorable Daniels?
I agree.
Thank you. Honorable Freeland? Honorable Freeland?
Green.
Honorable Stewart is, thank you, Honorable Freeland. Honorable Stewart is excused. We have a vote of three in favor, zero opposed, Chair not voting. We are officially adjourned at 2:00. Thank you, sorry about that.